It's a parade committee, right?
Again, he calls about the howling with the berms. They picked up that light cloud of buildings when they, one of the snowstorms a couple of weeks ago, howling, and what they did is, they hit the berms and it's a care of some, a neighbor of itself. But they have to pick them up. Also, the whole repair.
I'd like to call this March 2nd session of the Hoyoke City Council to order, the clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley.
Here.
Resnahan. Shatner.
Here.
Graney.
Here.
Jordane.
Here.
Leahy. LeBron Martinez. Lisi. McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke. We have the pleasure of a few honorees this evening. As the council will recall, at a prior meeting of the city council, the city council had the pleasure of extending our best wishes and congratulations to a wonderful citizen of ours, Helen Rogers, in recognition of her commitment to her family, her friends, and her community, but most importantly, in celebration of her 100th birthday. And it's our pleasure to say that Helen is watching us this evening, and I wanted to recognize the counselor from Ward 4, Josie Valentin, if she would be kind enough to say some remarks on behalf of Hel- wherever, whatever you wish. And you can please read the proclamation as well.
Good evening, everyone. So Helen Rogers is a Ward 4 resident, and she turned 100 a couple of weeks ago. She's in good spirits, but she, when we accepted, I mean, when we decided to do this proclamation for her and we let her know that we were going to be doing it here tonight, her words to me were, "I don't really go out at night anymore, but thanks." So she is watching from home, so hi Helen, and she's very, very grateful that we are recognizing her for her 100th birthday. Helen is a great spirit, and we very much congratulate her on this. So the proclamation reads, "Be it resolved that the Holyoke City Council extends its congratulations to Helen Rogers in recognition of her commitment to her family, friends, and community, and to celebrate her 100th birthday, and be it further resolved that the Holyoke City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, that this resolution be duly signed by the president of the city council and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Hoyoke by Kevin Jordane, president of city council, attested by our city clerk Brenna Murphy McGee, on here now, February 2016th, which was the original date based on her birthday, but obviously today, March 2nd. So we wish Helen tons of health so that she can continue to contribute to our community. They did a huge party for her where she lives, and also another family party for her in the Boston area. And just, just for the record, so that Helen knows, because she's watching, the proclamation itself was done by Patty Devine, and they know each other, and Patty wanted me to let her know about that. So thank you very much, and congratulations to Helen.
Thank you very much, and we're very lucky to have Patty does all of our proclamations for us. It's very much appreciated. At this time, I'd like to recognize Counselor Bartley for welcoming Mike Ahern, who is the president of the St. Patrick's Parade Committee, and we're all very excited to have our parade that's going to be coming up, as well as other members of the parade committee, as well as our wonderful Colleens. We welcome Mike to the rostrum for a few words to say. Mike, if you would certainly give the greetings of the parade committee. David, you're also welcome to say a few words on behalf of the city council and certainly extend our best wishes. All of the community is so proud of the St. Patrick's Parade. It's a wonderful tradition of ours, and we're so thankful for all the work that all the men and women of our parade committee do on our behalf, and on behalf of all the people of the area who so enjoy the parade. So David, why don't you say a few words?
Thanks to the membership, thanks President Jordane. This is, this is what I hope will become an annual tradition at the city council. As you know, we give our proclamations to the award winners, and that's done on our behalf by the city council president, but it's done, you know, not here, where it should be done, right, right in the city council chambers. And so I was really fortunate to have the 2010 Parade Marshal Joe McGivern and the 2010 Parade President Jim Leahy co-sponsor an order with me, and I want to thank Jim and Joe personally for doing that. And the order said quickly to have the, as many members of the parade committee want to come down, the Colleens, the award winners, and of course, the parade president, come to city council chambers, and so we could recognize them. We have such a special event in this city, March 19th and 20th, but I think those of us that really know the parade know that this, this event really is planned virtually all year long with events that go around the calendar, and it's really a tribute to, to the men and women here that have come, but there are 200 more behind them that do all this great work, and the organization is tremendous, and it's really, it's a model for a nation. So we know we have the second biggest parade, St. Patrick's Parade, we also know we have the best St. Patrick's Parade, and it's because of these people here. So I'd like to introduce this year's parade president. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that Patty Devine, the parade marshal, former city counselor, and Mark Joyce, who is what? The Rowan Award winner, is a former Ward 7 city counselor. Mark didn't join us, but of course Patty's here tonight, and she's already been recognized. So without further ado, the parade president, Mike Ahern. Thank you, and it's, it's really an honor to be recognized by the city council in the city of Hoyoke, it's a tremendous organization of volunteers who just put a tremendous amount of effort and time into this fantastic reunion weekend of the road race and the parade. We would've had more members here, but we're actually lining the parade up as we speak. But there's a few other people that need to be introduced. One is our grand Colleen Megan Ryan. Our O'Connell Award winner, Jim Wildman. And our Galvin Award winner, Sue Doran. You know this is a great organization, a great event, because you're pulling people from out of town who now are award winners, Sue Doran, and myself as president, we're from Northampton, so we just want to be part of you folks as part of one big family. Thanks again. Oh, and pray for good, good weather. We know Patty's in charge of that, but hang out the rosaries.
I wanted to say hi to Helen Rogers and her celebration of her 100th birthday, and just to thank everybody, the city of Hoyoke has always supported the parade, and it's an honor this year to be named marshal, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Congratulations. Oh, yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations.
If I could, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Presnahan.
I apologize, I know the roll call's already taken, but I just want to speak on behalf of Jimmy Leahy. He's dealing with some very personal medical issues with his wife, Eileen, that we all know and love dearly, and I ask that you keep her on in her prayers. They received some more negative news tonight, and Jim, Jim has clearly, with good, good reason, has decided to stay home with his wife, so I just want to make, make it known that Jim is not, you know, out and about like he usually is, he's home with his wife, and he should be, and so we just want to keep that family in our prayers, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that, and certainly our, our thoughts and prayers are with Jim and Eileen, certainly. We wish both of them the very best, as well as their children. So counselors, we have now some items laid on the table, unless there's anything coming out of, under any rule suspension, I'm going to turn our attention to those items at this time. We have two items marked, one and two on the agenda. One is relative to parking on Leary Drive, the other is a petition of Verizon, New England. Do we need to move either one of these off of the table? Hearing none, we will now move to public comment. We had three citizens sign up for public comment this evening. First up is Daniel Leary of 538 Hamden Street. Daniel, welcome.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions regarding.
Could you just make sure that microphone's on, Daniel? There's a little button on there.
Hello?
Much better, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Daniel Leary, I'm a longtime resident of Hoyoke, and I have a question probably more pertinent to the Department of Public Works, but also this council. Is it possible in the future, and I'm trying to reference the fact that the policy for picking up trash drastically changed about three months ago, is it possible in the future that the system of addressing the citizens for parking and snow warnings and other events in the city could be used to tell the citizens if there's any kind of like, I believe that was a radical shift in policy, in the future, could it be used to give us a heads up? And second, the ordinances or laws or fines that were put on the notice on the trash, would they be available at the DPW, or would I have to come here to find them? Thank you.
Okay. Perhaps you could elaborate, Daniel, what, you mentioned a policy change, could you just be a little bit more specific?
Okay. About a year ago, they changed the size of the trash receptacles.
Okay, so they can only be so large?
Yes.
That's correct, yeah.
This time, a bit without notice, the, what they would pick up and how they would pick it up, like specifically, if you have too much garbage and you put a trash bag next to your available garbage, this was like around Christmases or so, they tagged it and had warnings and had a call-in, and that was all right, I guess, but it was sudden, and I was wondering if possibility of giving a heads-up to the citizens by using the system where you tell us about parking and snow warnings and all that could be utilized if there's a shift in policy like that.
That's a fair point, yeah. We could ask, yeah, you raise a good point, and we could ask the DPW to perhaps send out some public advisory, or perhaps something in the gas and electric bills, or the water bills, or something of this nature.
Right, I'd appreciate that.
Happy to do that.
And second, the ordinances or the bylaws or whatever, they base that on, I think they mentioned fines that I can't recall ahead, all that would be on file down at the DPW, I'm assuming.
I would assume so, yeah, I think that as it relates to their own affairs, they would have the rules on, you know, the size, you know, whether it's 35 gallon barrel, and if you don't, then they don't pick it up, or they'll put an orange tag, or things of this nature. Mr. Fuqua, you could ask for him, I'm sure he would have a good handle on all those rules.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for coming. Next up to speak is Susan Van Pelt. Susan resides at 246 Walnut Street, Susan.
Hi, I'm here tonight to speak in support of Hoyoke joining the 160 towns and cities in Massachusetts, which have already joined the Community Preservation Act. With the exemptions and rate proposed, the cost to individual property owners is minimal, but it adds up to a sizable pool whose allocations remain locally controlled. This pool would make Hoyoke also eligible for state matching funds. CPA monies can also be used to leverage additional grants and to reduce bond costs for the city. Earlier tonight, there was a fundraiser upstairs to preserve and restore city hall stained glass windows, that's just one example of the many projects the Community Preservation Act could be used for. The murals in this very room are another possibility, it's something that needs restoration. And just this week, we saw the armory building collapse because no one invested in gutters years ago, or made simple repairs in a timely fashion. Unlike community development block grant funds, CPA money can be used citywide, so I hope, I hope all city councilors will join in supporting sending the CPA to referendum for the voters in November. And I ask all councilors also to attend the committee meeting when it is announced in order to learn more about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Darlene Elias, Darlene is from 17 Clark Street, welcome Darlene.
Good evening, city council. Today I come to you to speak as a homeowner. I've owned my home since 2001 off on Clark Street, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the CPA, Community Preservation Act. And as a homeowner, I'm very concerned with the fact that my taxes have doubled since I purchased a home in 2001, and it appears to me that aside from my taxes, my fees have gone up, there's many expenses that have been placed on me unfairly as a taxpayer. So I have those concerns, as many homeowners here in Hoyoke do. And I know that a lot of that has to do with the fact that we've lost revenue and taxes due to businesses not coming to Hoyoke. But I want to stand here before you and tell you that I am in support of the Community Preservation Act, and I'll tell you why. One of the reasons why we've lost tax revenue in the city is because we don't have businesses that want to open up shop here. We have people who don't want to purchase homes here, and one of the reasons is, is the condition of our city. If we don't have people who are willing to invest in this city, we're going to continue to unfairly have that burden, and it's just going to increase. We saw the sewer taxes or sewer fees go up, and there's other things that are on the table. For me, the way I feel is, as a homeowner and as a long-term resident here in Hoyoke, is that if we don't together collectively invest in our community and begin to address areas of Hoyoke, to preserve it, to prevent urban decay, to work on issues of pollution, to revitalize areas of Hoyoke that would attract businesses, such as High Street and Main Street, we're going to continue to see this problem. It's a cyclical problem, so we need to work together on that. So I know that if you send the CPA referendum to ballot, as a homeowner, I will be voting in support of that, and I ask you to support it as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Darlene. All right, so we've had an opportunity to listen to all of our public folks who have requested public comment, and now we now move on to communications on Mr. Bartley.
The president, we have, we have two orders relative to this. I mean, I'm not a maker of either one, but I hope the makers want to take them up.
Yeah, I would like to suspend the necessary rules, thank you Counselor Bartley, and take up items number 24, 30, and 31 as a package, please.
Apprehender reading, if possible?
Okay. All right, so 20, just getting my hands on all of them, so we have good housekeeping here. Okay. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules for the purposes of taking up items 24, 30, and 31 as a package, and taking them up at this time. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, yes, actually, before the item goes to committee, I'd like to make an amendment to item number 30, please, just for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
On the language where, I'm just trying to find the exact line, Mr. President, I apologize, just where the line, where it says, "That the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be," I would like to amend that line to just say up to 3%, and that's just for discussion purposes.
Okay. Up to 3%, okay. All right, so we'll do the main motion, then as soon as that is, I'll recognize that amendment. So the motion on the floor is to send them to what committee is your pleasure? Finance, ordinance?
Ordinance? Is it supposed to be under an ordinance?
We could do a few. We could do ordinance, we could do DGR, we could do finance, any one of the three. Counselor Bartley, do you have an opinion?
Well, I, I don't care, but I guess there are already two CPA orders in that committee.
In what committee?
Development Government Relations, so, so, I mean, I don't know if we had, but I don't know, Mr. President, if we have, this, this is for a ballot question, so I don't know if we have a, if it matters, what?
Is there a timeline?
No, well, there is, there is, you have to be so many days before the ballot, but you're well within, within that timeframe at this point. If this were October, it would be a different situation.
Well, I'll make a motion and send it to the Development Government Relations Committee.
Okay.
A second.
So motion's been made and seconded to refer all three items to the Development and Government Relations Committee. That motion is on the floor. I'll recognize Counselor Roman's amendment, which is to revise the word 1.5% to say up to 3%. That was seconded. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. The items stand now before the body as amended, any other discussion?
Counselor.
Counselor Tomlin.
Mr. President, if the maker doesn't mind, if you add my name to items 30 and 31, please.
Okay. Counselor Tomlin as a co-sponsor to items 30 and 31.
Same for me, please.
And Counselor Valentin.
Mr. President?
Thought objection, just a moment. Trying to take good notes here. Counselor Bartley.
So I, in anticipation of this possibly happening, what I've done is, well, so next Monday, we have a meeting for CDBG on the 7th, and that's the only agenda item there.
That's a pretty weighty item.
It is, it is, and I know there's a lot of concerns, and again, I want to recognize Counselor Sullivan for all his hard work and diligence he did for the CAC. He did a lot of work representing us. So that was a good appointment you made, Kevin, Mr. President, on that, so Mike, so nice job for that. And then we are, we are set to have two meetings in April. I don't know which one it'll be, but we are meeting April 2nd, the committee's meeting April 2nd and April 20th, and we'll just, we'll work out the agenda, and so it'll be one of those two dates.
Then we'll have a round robin conversation about CPA.
We'll have, we'll have a rapid fire, if you will, we'll do it all.
Very good.
April 2nd is Saturday. I'm sorry, April 4th, April 20th, April 4th, April 20th, sorry about that, I, Saturdays are, yeah, sorry.
You can meet on Saturdays.
Sorry, Joe.
We could. We have, actually.
We have, we have.
Not often, but we have.
All right, we'll slip it a little.
All right. So motion on the floor is to send these three orders as amended over to the Development and Government Relations Committee, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three. Item number three is a communication from the mayor, this is subject to your approval. I hereby reappoint the following individuals to serve as members of the Library Board of Directors for the city of Hoyoke, Mr. Bellamy Schmidt of 661 West Cherry Street, Mr. George Meddy of 7 Hemlock Drive, Hoyoke, and Mr. Jeremy Smith of 485 Hillside Avenue, Hoyoke. They will serve each a two-year term, said terms will expire in February of 2018. Respectfully submitted, the mayor.
Motion to confirm the reappointments?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive this communication and to confirm the reappointments of all three of these gentlemen. Any discussion? of all three of these gentlemen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. They are confirmed.
Mr. President, could we take items four and five as a package, please?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take items four and five as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number four is a communication from the mayor. He is seeking to reappoint Nicole Morrison of one twenty-four Ridgewood Avenue to serve as a member of the Commission on Disabilities. Her term will be for three years, and that term will expire in March of two thousand and nineteen. Item number five is an appointment from the mayor as well, seeking to reappoint Mary Morris of fifteen Oakwood Avenue, also to a three-year term on the Commission on Disabilities, and that term will expire in March of two thousand and nineteen.
Motion to approve the reappointments?
Okay, motion is made and seconded to suspend our rules and to confirm these, both of these appointments at this time. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Both confirmed. Item six. Item number six is a communication from Brenna Murphy McGee, our city clerk, and Ryan Allen, Administrative Assistant to the City Council. These are the minutes of our February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting.
And approve? And approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and approve the minutes of February sixteenth. That has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven. Item number seven is a communication from Alicia Zeller, Administrator of the Office of Community Development. It is a letter regarding the CDBG allocation spreadsheet.
Motion received and sent. Copy DGR.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive item seven. Refer to the DGNR committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Out of number eight. Item number eight is a communication from HEDIC.
Can we suspend the rules, Mr. President? Take?
Sure.
Eight to twelve at least.
Eight through?
Eight through twelve as a package?
Twelve as a package, please.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take items eight through twelve as a package, as they're all minutes of various board meetings. All in favor of that suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight, as I stated, was the Hoyok Economic Development and Industrial Corporation Annual Meeting Minutes, as well as their regular meeting minutes for the period December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Item number nine is the Board of Fire Commission Minutes for January twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Item number ten is the Board of Public Works Minutes for January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Item number eleven is the Sewer Commission Minutes of January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. And item number twelve is the Stormwater Authority Minutes of January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a motion?
Motion received.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive all of these items. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirteen. Item number thirteen comes to us by way of our former colleague, Mr. Diastala Lopez, who happens to be the Board President of the Hispanic Family, inviting the Hoyok City Council to its twenty-ninth Annual Hispanic Family Festival and Western Massachusetts Puerto Rican Parade. And I, hopefully, we will cheerfully accept.
Motion received.
Motion received. Motion has been received. And Ryan, if you would be kind enough, if
he hasn't already, to send this around, I think I did get something from Diastala by email, but just make sure everybody gets that. Okay? Motion on the floor is to receive item thirteen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number fourteen. Item number fourteen comes to us from Thomas Gibson, Esquire. He is an attorney, and he is sending us a letter. This is an amendment to, it's regarding an amendment to the Municipal Ordinance two dash four twenty-one. This is the time for holding meetings. And this fine gentleman was retained by a retirement board of the opinion that they do not need to hold their meetings five o'clock or later, like all the other boards and commissions of the city. And as a result, they want to continue to have their meetings in the mornings.
Receive and refer to ordinance?
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance.
Copy to the Law Department for a upfront ruling, please.
Yep, copy to the Law Department, so we can, I'm sure we'll have follow-up discussion. I also have a lead file item that I'll mention at President's Report. All in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Petitions. First up, petition of Carlos Ramos for a new special permit for a motor vehicle repair garage to be located at one eighty-four Suffolk Street.
Receive and refer to DGR.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the DGNR committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Out of number sixteen. Item number sixteen comes to us by way of a petition from Joseph Harfoush. He is seeking a renewal of his livery license for a vehicle to be garaged at three ninety-five Maple Street.
Can we suspend the rules and move on that tonight, since it's a renewal?
We could. Yes. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to suspend our rules, to approve, to approve the renewal of the livery license for Mr. Harfoush, who has had this for a few years. I would note on here, let me just make sure everything is in good order. Yes, the Tax Collector's Office, as well as the other municipal departments, all concur that he is current on his property taxes, sewer fees, water department fees, gas and electric fees, and other municipal fees and charges. He has provided proof of auto He also has provided a copy of his certificate of registration from the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So everything appears to be in order for Mr. Harfoush.
Motion to approve the renewal?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the renewal. Any discussion? Counsel McGivern?
Could, Mr. President, just anticipating a favorable approval, I would just ask it be pending the annual inspection of the police department, or by annual inspection?
Yeah, sure. Good point. So we'll add as a condition that he is required to pass the annual inspection of his vehicles by the police department. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the renewal of Mr. Harfoush's livery license. Next person, yep. Counsel Leahy was selected by our normal rules, by draw, to vote first, so we'll be, whoever's after Leahy alphabetically, will be voting first. But clerk will call the roll. Yes vote is in favor of Mr. Harfoush's livery license, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved Mr. Harfoush's livery license. Item number seventeen is a petition of Maloney Development LLC for a special permit for a driveway in the front yard for the property address located at sixty-one dash one thirty-two Tokoniki Road. And this now is before us. Further details here state he's seeking a new curb cut and a driveway from Farnham Drive to serve a proposed new building at this location.
Okay, so I think-
And there's all kinds of maps and various other attachments.
So I like to receive that and refer that to Development Government Relations, but I also want to get, get opinion from whatever, either Public Works or Planning. So I like to get some sort of, and I'm going to say the same thing, I'm going to ask us to reconsider fifteen as well, just so I can make sure we get proper opinions from the appropriate city departments on fifteen as well.
Okay.
So, which I didn't think of, sorry.
Motion on the floor is to send item seventeen to the DGNR committee with a copy to Planning and, I'm sorry, DPW, you said?
City Engineer, DPW.
City Engineer and DPW for the purposes of advising the DGNR committee on this matter.
Yep.
Okay? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we just reconsider fifteen, Mr. President?
Motion to reconsider our action on item fifteen. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I just want to send a copy to, planning, I would, I would think as well, for opinion from them.
Okay. So motion on the floor is to send, as I understand it, Mr. Ramos's request for a special permit for a motor vehicle repair garage to be located at one eighty-four Suffolk Street, request is to send it to the DGNR committee with a copy to the Planning Department for their review and to advise the committee accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Brezneren?
Do we know, do we know it's currently at one eighty-four Suffolk Street?
I do not.
Counsel Bartley?
No idea.
Right, I'm pretty sure it's a garage. The problem with, the problem with the special permit terminology is that the City Council years ago decided to get involved with the License Board. So anybody that wants, anybody that wants to get a license to repair cars in a garage that was already a garage for a hundred years, it's already been in the City of Hoyok, has to get a special permit. Yes, they do. If I sell my garage, and it's a garage, if Jim Mobile's, everybody, they have to get special permits to be a garage. I just want to be sure that, you know, they're just not changing from the guy that was working there and the guy that retired. That's all, that's all I'm suggesting. I got, you want to set it to DGNR, just, just want to be mindful that, the special permit, you know, the License Board, the special permit to get an auto license, auto sale, auto repair, has to now go to the City of Hoyok, City Council. Doesn't go to the License Board anymore. It comes to us for approval, then it goes to the License Board.
Is it for that use? Is that why? Because special permits are only good for the person that held it, and they need our permission to transfer it?
Right, well, I mean, I mean, you know, the City Council's gotten their hands around a lot of special permits, which is a different fight for a different, but again, I think one, I think, actually, I think it's a-
Can't think of that guy's name there. Mr. President?
Counsel McGivern?
Mr. President, one eighty-four Suffolk Street, I believe, is the newer building that was next to the old Purcell's Garage. I don't believe it was ever used as a garage, per se, repair. At one time, housed the ambulance. At one time, Mr. Marinello sold cars out of there, not a car lot, but he sold them from wholesale. And I, I'm not too sure exactly what this permit is requesting, but it may be the first time that motor vehicle repair has ever actually been on the site. It's a very small parcel that I think, when the YMCA took over, a lot of that land, we're not able to, it was excluded from the purchase and sale.
Counsel Valentin?
Thank you. If we could suspend the rules, if it's okay with Kara, because she actually sent a communication through email on February twenty-ninth regarding this. So if we could suspend the rules, in case there's anything that we should know before we move on this item?
Before we send it to committee?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow our city solicitor to address us on this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Kara?
The, our Planning Department actually got a copy of the special permit application and asked about this, because the property, which is actually according to the assessor's one seventy-eight Suffolk Street, there is no one eighty-four in the assessor records, is in an RO zone, and auto repair by special permit is not allowed in RO. But according to our research, Counsel Brezneren is correct, that an auto business, I believe, auto sales and auto repair has been there, at least according to the assessor records, it's always been classified as at use going back to the nineteen fifties. So it's probably a pre-existing non-conforming use. The council actually can't grant a special permit because it's in the RO zone, but as long as they don't expand the use, or it hasn't gone out of business for more than two years, they can just continue it regardless of who's owning it or operating it.
So I would recommend that this individual either speak to you, or Counsel Brezneren, or-
Well, at this point, the application's been filed, so it's up to the council if you want to give it leave to withdraw, or I would suggest, I mean, if you want to discuss it in committee, but I would suggest not-
I want to make sure we, yeah, I want to make sure-
Not advertising it, because that's substantial cost to the applicant.
Correct. To the applicant, mind you, is the operative words there. And hopefully, he knows his legal rights before he spends his money. But I wouldn't want to just give this leave to withdraw without a letter from him asking us to do that, just for our procedural rights. That would be my concern. But Counsel McGivern?
To the state's solicitor, not so much a question, but I think the confusion is, this building does not go back to the nineteen fifties. Purcell's Garage went back to the nineteen fifties, which is probably the other address, which is now the land which the YMCA newest swimming pool was on. This building was built originally, I think, by Purcell, but eventually taken over by Mark Marinello, who started originally was, with, I think, an ambulance service, just a garage for that, and then he did a number of things with it. So I think we're going to need a lot of help on this, is identifying, this is one building, and it used to be two buildings on a double lot. Well, I'm not even sure about that, but two buildings on, on a lot that housed a garage that was actually a gas station garage from well before the fifties. So I think we're going to need the advice before we go forward as to what is appropriate or what is necessary.
I'm happy to advise you, but the burden, I mean, the council can't grant a special permit, because it's not allowed in that zone. So I would suggest the applicant can offer that information. There may be some records in the assessor's office, that's about all. And I do believe the assessor's card listed the building as being built at least in the nineteen sixties.
Mr. President?
So if it was referred to committee, I mean, there could be a discussion, but it, to save the cost, it shouldn't be advertised for a public hearing, yet, at least.
I'll set you, or do you have another thought?
My only other thought is, why is it in front of us? Why wasn't this called before I got here?
The gentleman probably, obviously, he didn't consult with you. He probably just went ahead and filed it, and now it's here.
Right, it came to my attention when Planning got a copy of it, so.
Counsel Valentin?
I'm just wondering if it would make most sense to perhaps table the item until these issues are sorted out, or?
My preference would be that it goes to committee, and then the committee will, I would hope someone is going to reach out to this person, or whatever, and say, you know, you need to follow the process, but please be advised. You know, one, you're asking for something that legally cannot happen. I don't know, is there going to be a conversation with the gentleman at some point? Is, what's the, what's the city's posture at this point on it? Is we going to send him a letter saying that you've asked for something that we can't do? I mean, maybe just a courtesy letter?
Sure.
Or maybe, and to call you? Could someone just send him a letter, say, you know, gee, Mr. Ramos, the City Council, you know, you happen to be legal counsel for the City Council, and, you know, you, we've received this, it's sitting in the DGNR committee, but before we, you go through all this expense and such, you may want to call my office just to discuss?
Sure, I mean, I would suggest, I mean, the applicant can also consult their own attorney.
Of course.
I'm happy to send a letter. I don't have the application, so if Ryan or-
Yeah, Ryan, would you get, would you get care of all the details? And then, yeah, obviously, the end of it's going to be, tell him to go seek his own lawyer, just, you know, that's his duty. Yes, Counsel Brezneren?
Thanks, Kara. And my concern has been, and always will be, that, that an application, they call it a special permit, that's, that's a new term, but I mean, there's a guy that wants, wants to bring a business into City Hoyok, and there's called, we have a License Board that reviews motor vehicle repair, issues of licenses for motor vehicle repair, issues of licenses for motor vehicle sales. But the City Council has decided, in their infinite wisdom, as they continue to do, that they want to get their hands into the License Board. I mean, we might as well just get rid of the License Board and have everything, liquor license, auto sales, the jukeboxes, the pool tables, have them all come to city, have them all come in front of the City Council. We'll give them all special permits. I would like this, I would like the Law Department, respectfully, to seek out how many other communities require the City Council's special permit for motor vehicle license repair license, or sales license. I don't know, I mean, I don't want to put more work on you, but, and we can certainly have that conversation privately, but again, this is something, that's something new that has come down the track within the last decade, that the City Council wants to, instead of putting a limit on the amount of these vehicles that can be sold, that the amount of licenses that are allowed, that the City of Chickaby did, we decided to call everybody that wants to come in. So you know what this guy's going to do? He's going to go to another town. What, what, what does he want? He went to the Planning Board, he went to the License Board, now he's going to come to the City Council. You know what he's going to do? He's going to go to some other town. He's going to make his business in another town. I mean, and I say this with love of my heart, but a special permit for a guy to get an auto repair license that has been, whether it's one eighty-four, it's in the same building, they've been doing it for a hundred years there. And why the City Council all of a sudden wants to get in, any of us that have expertise in motor vehicles? It amazes me, and it's unfortunate, but again, special permits for motor vehicle license. If you could find out, Kara, how many communities within the state of Massachusetts require the City Council approval for a motor vehicle license repair or sales license?
Sure.
I'd be thrilled to know what that number is, and I could tell you, there's probably one, and it's us.
I think you'll be surprised by that answer.
Kara, if I was listening carefully to what you were saying earlier, I thought what I heard was, this gentleman may not even need anything from the City Council, that if he's under a pre-existing use-
Right.
-ownership not being at issue, it really does, it's immaterial here. If he's continuing the same use, not expanding it, he probably doesn't need any special permit. He could simply continue what he's doing. That's a possibility. Well, that's a whole separate issue, so, you have to still get, and I just wanted, the dichotomy here is, you have to have a license from the license commission to do the use, right, to do what this activity, but you also have to have it from a zoning perspective.
Right.
Is it allowed in that zone, and that's why we have special permits? So there's two simultaneous issues here.
Yes.
And license board doesn't rule on zoning issues, we don't rule on license issues.
Right.
Yeah, okay, very good. So, that having been said, we have item 15 in front of us. At this point, we could table it, we could send it to DGNR, we have the law, we're going to get the law department the information to send the gentleman a basic letter, saying he should get his own counsel, but furthermore, that, just be advised, these are some of the concerns we have. So is it the pleasure to table it, or to send it to committee at this time?
Let the motion stand.
What was the prior?
Send it to committee.
Committee. Okay. Motion on the floor is to send to the DGNR committee, with a copy to the planning department, as well as perhaps the law department, I think perhaps we should add that as well. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that now brings us to president's report, I just want to give you a brief update on a few different things. One was that yesterday, excuse me, Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with the outside auditors, I wanted to say that, this is Melanson Heath, I thought that was a very productive meeting, we met for about an hour, it's the first time, as a city council, I've ever been approached by the outside auditors to give my thoughts, or ask my opinion about different various things financially that are going on in the city, how are we doing on this, that. They had a number of really good questions. The big focus, of course, was on the city filling the auditor position, and filling the tax collector position. They're very concerned about the lack of, you know, really having, long-term, high-quality people in these positions, and making sure we have permanent people in these positions. So certainly, that's our goal, is to fill those positions, but they did, they did specifically ask me that. So I just wanted to just bring that to your attention, whenever I have these type of meetings, I like to let the body know that. I wanted to remind counselors that I am, by the end of the week, going to be sending a capital bond request to the mayor. In it, there's going to be a number of items that I think are important, things that I feel that, and I articulated a lot of those on inauguration day, that I wanted to, that feel need to be capital funded. I can tell you, a lot of these have to relate to traffic intersections, a number of park improvements, sidewalk improvements, police cars that I feel we should have them bonded for, as opposed to expense to improve our cash flow. I'm also proposing the windows for upstairs. I had spoken to the mayor, and I said, as, you know, as meritorious as it is that folks are trying to raise money to do the windows upstairs, this really is a capital improvement, this is a city obligation to fix the windows upstairs, you know, we owe it, we inherited city hall, these things need to be done. There's a whole, a whole other list of different various things, there was a request from the school department to do some things that they simply can't get chapter 90 funding for, that I want the mayor to consider to put into this. But my point also in bringing this up is, if there are things that you feel are really important to your ward, the city at large, or things that you think that we should have in this capital bond within reason, you know, we're obviously not, you know, loaded to the max with cash, but I want to make sure that we're doing capital improvements, even amidst our struggles as a city financially from a cash flow perspective, these are really things, are really important to the community that we continue to do. So if you have these type of requests, please email them to me, ideally, say, in the next couple of days, because I'd like to give this to the mayor by Friday, I did promise him that shortly, I was going to get to this, and it's been a little bit longer than shortly. So if you could send me an email, if you have any suggestions or thoughts as to things you feel really should be done, please let me know, and I will, I would happily include those in the request. Yes, Counsel Valentin?
Just a quick question, last night, I was here for the election results, and Brenna and her team did a great, great job, and the conversation came up about how the machines are 20 years old, and the staff could greatly benefit from having some updated equipment. Would that be something that would be inappropriate?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so, because we talked about about a hundred thousand would be the price tag, so I would be happy to support that in whatever way possible.
Great, okay, so I will consider that already on the list, as from yourself, that's a great idea, and from the city clerk, a hundred thousand for new voting machine equipment. So let's, let's do that, and, you know, we'll get into the details, but we want to really get a real rough sketch of where we're going with all of this, and to get this moved forward so that, obviously, ultimately, the mayor has to prepare and approve the final package, and then that can come in front of us for a vote, and then we move forward.
President?
Yes, Counsel Bresnahan?
It's come to my knowledge that the machines have been moved as well, from the first floor, the voting machines where they were, that would be taken right out of the first floor, out into the parking lot, and the voting machines have been moved up to the second floor of city hall, or the intentions are to do that, I believe there may be an order coming up about that, I mean, perhaps we could find out the cost of having these voting machines on the second floor of city hall, as opposed to the first floor of city hall, and, you know, what the purpose, what the intention is, and how we're saving money by doing that?
That's good to know, and I, let's hope it's not in one of the rooms that we had about 10 years ago, Peter, I think you'll recall, we put it in one of the back rooms in the, in the what? Oh, they're on this floor now, I was going to say. Because I believe we were short on space, and they put them in the second floor, and the room leaked, and we had to spend about a hundred thousand to fix the machines, I think we recall that. Okay, so that's that item I wanted to get out of the way. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, I do have two late, I will confess now, two late file orders, but legitimately, the issues came up after the deadline to file for the meeting. One relates to the retirement board, I want to have them in, I'm just beside myself, floored at their attitude regarding having the only board in the city that refuses to have their meetings after five o'clock, five or later. They're insisting on having these morning meetings when citizens and taxpayers are unable to attend these meetings. To me, it's outrageous that they're unwilling to have their meetings at a time when the people who are giving them all the money are actually able to attend. As we know, in a budget, it's 12.1 million dollars, you know, taxpayers of Hoyok write a check to go up to the retirement board, and they're simply unwilling to have these meetings at a time when citizens are available. We did pass an ordinance to this effect, and they're doing tooth and nail to apparently fight to continue to have their meetings in the mornings, when average citizens would like to attend. I think it's outrageous that folks have to take a day off from work to be able to attend a retirement board meeting, or get to know what's going on, and to participate in the process of our democracy. And so there will be a late file order asking them to come in to discuss this, and see if we can have some softening of the hearts on this. The other, the other item that I have a late file order on has come to my attention is, and it was, you know, talked about vaguely, I remember one time, it was mentioned to me by one of the aides to the mayor, that there was this, you know, it was just strictly esoteric, that there was going to be a conversation about maybe moving some offices, or they're developing a plan to, you know, where they want to locate things around city hall, and, but at no time, I don't know if anybody in this room was consulted, but a number of, some offices are being moved around city hall, including some of our appointees, and I, at no time have I been consulted about changes of office. I noticed that the tax collector's office has now been relocated down to the ground level, you know, I think we need to have a conversation about these things before they, before they take place. I think in good faith, the city council, just by way of history, the city council has always had the authority over the location of municipal offices, through our administrative assistant, this has been the longstanding practice. In good faith, we changed that about two, three years ago now, and gave that authority to the mayor directly, but it was with the intention that there would be a dialogue, or there would be a conversation if these type of changes happened, and unfortunately, we're just seeing moves, and we're not getting the dialogue part. So I have an order in to have a conversation about that. And what are the other plans? What can, what can citizens expect here at city hall? What is the grand plan for all these different moves of the various departments? I think we need to have that transparent out in the open, and we can have a conversation about what works for everybody. And so that, that is coming in late file, and I know Counsel Graney also is co-sponsoring that with me. Counsel Graney, did you?
Yeah, there probably also is a cost that's involved in this, too. We'd like to know what that is, too.
And where that, where are those dollars coming from?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're getting moved, too, to the old police station, I heard.
Well, you'll notice in the, I will say, to make you feel better, the council was not that foolish. You'll note that in the ordinance change, the city council chambers and our offices remain under the jurisdiction of the city council, and only we alone can move our offices under current law, so we don't, fear not, that shall not happen. Okay, so I have those two before us. I also wanted to bring to the attention of the body, if you're interested in a civics lesson, next week, on the 8th, at 2:00, in the Hampden Superior Court, there's going to be a hearing on the issue of local approval, and the needle exchange issue, and all of that. So hopefully, a lot of that will be coming to a head next week, on March the 8th, at 2:00 in the afternoon, down in the Superior Court, and there'll be a hearing before one of the justices in that court, who will be hearing oral argument on both sides of that interesting issue, municipal government, 2:00, yeah. So you're all welcome, invited, anybody from the public, it's an open court session. So that is it for the president's report, any questions on any of that? Okay, here we run, moving right along to reports of committees, we are up first with ordinance. Yes, Counsel Holman?
Sorry, I just had a, under public announcements, this Friday night, evening at the waterfront, they're under new management, actually, they're switching management, I met with the new owners, they've renovated, done some really amazing work, they're doing a public opening, grand reopening, to show all the renovations, the work they're doing, they actually have a new barbecue program going on in the kitchen, they're really working hard to really work with the community, so they wanted me to invite and extend an invitation to all counselors this Friday night, 7:00 at the waterfront, to come see the new updated changes and everything that they're doing there.
You should send an email on that, too? Yeah, thanks, Nelson, appreciate it. Okay, great, any other announcements? Okay, great, I think we caught it all. First up is item 18A, counselors, and that is the committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order that the city affixes a handicap parking sign on the telephone pole located in front of 99 Carlton Street. Have considered the same, that the handicap application be approved, counselors Vacan, Shatnov, Bartley, and Jordaine.
A motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the ordinance report, and to pass the first reading, is this going to be a ordinance, I assume? It looks, I see a legal form here for handicap parking. And to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
This was a pretty straightforward application, and it was reviewed by our commission on disabilities and recommended that it be approved.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
A motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change, and no vote is to deny it.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Valentin?
Before, before we move to the next one, I'm sorry, I should have announced this right after Counselor Roman made his announcement. Can I just make a very quick announcement?
Yeah, sure, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm on the board for Wisteriahurst Museum, and both Counselor Roman and I have been involved in this initiative that I wanted to just kind of announce, because it is open to the public, and it's great. We're doing an opening reception this Saturday at Wisteriahurst at 2:00 PM, it's called Nuestras Abuelas, which is our grandmothers, and it's actually a great project regarding people of Hoyok and their grandmothers, and it's a photo exhibit, and just kind of bringing in the whole piece of oral history, and generations to come, and such, so, so we're doing an opening reception at the Wisteriahurst Museum this Saturday at 2:00 PM, it's free, open to the public, it's, it has a lot of heart to it, and people have put a lot of work into it, so just wanted to invite everyone on behalf of the board of Wisteriahurst.
Great, thank you for sharing that. Next up is item 18B. 18B is a report from the committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order that whenever the mayor sells property to anyone, that he first notify all abutters prior to agreeing to that sale, that an ordinance be created to this effect. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, counselors Vacan, Shatnov, Bartley, and Jordaine.
A motion to receive and adopt and pass the first reading?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
Well, this issue came up when a property owner had put in a bid that had been accepted, but then upon presentation to the council, an abutter objected, stating that he had not been notified of the sale, and so a review took place as to what the interests might be, and what, at the end of the day, is in the best interest of the city, as well as the abutting property owners, and it was felt that, to be fair, when there is land or property available in the city, there should be notification made so that any potential purchasers that might be interested would be able to participate and offer a price. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Counsel McGivern?
Just quickly, Mr. President, I speak in favor of the adopting the ordinance, not just for what happened recently, but this has happened over the years, I would not, wouldn't pick on any current mayor, or any past mayor, because I think most of the time it's inadvertent, but I think abutters should have a right to know any times property's being sold, city-owned properties being sold next to them.
Okay, all right, all in favor of passing the second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Okay, motion's been, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change, a no vote is to deny it.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
No.
Shatnov?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Eleven yeas in one name.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Ordinance committee report 18C, the committee on ordinance, to whom is referred a handicap sign be placed in front of 62 Elm Street for Gail Bergeron. Have considered the same, recommend that the handicap application be approved, and the handicap space be assigned, counselors Vacan, Shatnov, Bartley, and Jordaine.
Motion to receive and adopt and pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to the ordinance committee report be received and adopted and pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
This is, again, a typical application that was reviewed by the disabilities commission and recommended for approval.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?[1688.45]
Aye.
Pose, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. Thank you. Ordinance committee report, agenda item eighteen D. The committee on ordinance to whom is referred that the DPW place no overnight parking signs in front of Five Donnelly Street and across from Five Donnelly Street per the request of the residents. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Vacan, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordaine.
Motion to receive and adopt and pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report, to adopt it, and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
Um, this has become a problem in the neighborhood with people just sort of, I think due to some of the problems over at the village, which hopefully will be resolved soon. I think we're very close on that. So the timing of these two should be compatible. Um, and because of all the pressure over there, they've moved into the neighborhood and the neighbors have been complaining of cars that are parked there for days at a time. So this attempt is to alleviate that problem without restricting the parking unreasonably.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion's been made and seconded that the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the ordinance change. We now move to the joint committee on city council and school committee. The first up is a report from that committee. The committee on joint?
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the necessary rules and take up eighteen E and F as a package, please?
Sure. Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up eighteen E, eighteen F as a package. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved. Eighteen E, uh, is a committee report from the joint committee on city council and school committee to whom referred an order that the city council invite in the school receiver to address the public as well as the city council. Have considered the same, recommend that this order has been complied with. Eighteen F is a report from the committee, uh, joint committee on city council and school committee to whom referred an order that the receiver of the public schools superintendent, Dr. Stevens Reich, appear before the joint committee of city council and school committee. Have considered the same, recommend that the order has been complied with. This has been signed off by both counselors, Roman, and Sullivan. Under discussion, the chairman, Counsel Roman.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you so much. I'd like to again, um, thank, uh, the receiver, Dr. Schreik, for being here and answering our questions for an hour and forty-five minutes. It was an amazing conversation. I'd like to thank, uh, besides the committee members, Counsel Sullivan and, uh, Lebron Martinez, and on the school committee side, uh, John Brunel, Irene Feliciano Sims, and Mildred LaFave. We had in attendance counselors Bartley, Vacan, uh, yourself, Mr. President, uh, counselors McGivern, uh, Graney, um, and we had a school committee member, Chris Shane, from Ward Seven, in attendance. Um, we covered issues that range from Dean Technical High School and what the future of Dean looks like, charter schools, transportation funding, um, the Peck Middle School. Thank you, Counsel Vacan, for bringing that up and having in-depth conversation. Um, teacher recruitment, teacher retention rates, uh, some of the great teaching staff that we have that might be leaving. Um, and as well as a very good question actually from Counsel Bartley with regards to how long the receiver had planned on staying in Holyoke and what does that timeframe look like. An amazing conversation with the committee. Um, we hope that to have the receiver back in front of us. And the receiver did make some announcements, including, uh, some of the staffing changes that are going on in the school department. There has been some exits. Um, they've hired Anthony Soto, not our colleague, uh, but another Anthony Soto from the city of Holyoke, and Eliana Sintrong, who's their new, um, outreach and community engagement worker. And we hope to have her before the committee sometime this month. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the committee reports be, uh, adopted, uh, received.
Yep, received and adopted, very good. Any discussion? Counsel Tomlin.
Just have a quick question. I'm sorry I couldn't make it down tonight. Just a quick one on, um, the building itself. Is there, was there any discussion about that, fifty-seven Suffolk, about the lease?
Um, through you, Mr. President. Yes, there was actually in-depth conversation and, uh, before the committee this month, actually, we're going to have the receiver, the mayor, department heads to talk about all of our tools available, including eminent domain if we have to, what's going to go on with the building. So we had some discussion around that. But at this month's joint committee, uh, meeting, Counsel Tomlin, we would love to have you there because that's going to be the main focus of the, this month's committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion? Okay, very good. All in favor of adopting the committee reports? Great meeting by our new chairman, outstanding job, very well organized, much appreciated. Uh, all in favor of adopting these committee reports?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved. Finance. Nineteen A. Committee on finance to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the emergency management performance grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be approved. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Vacan, and Shatnoff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, this is a grant that we receive every year. Uh, it's with regards to, uh, the fire station headquarters in the, the middle room right there, which is their emergency management room. Uh, this grant is for nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. There is no city match. Last year, we did get a grant and that got us a new smart board. The old smart board went up to the senior center. It's on the second floor. So wherever they can recycle and put somewhere else, they do. This one is going to be used for, uh, new chairs, new tables, and a weather, uh, station system within the emergency management room. So that's what the money goes towards.
Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting, uh, nineteen A and approving the receipt of this grant. Uh, a no vote is to deny that.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
By your vote, you've approved, uh, the acceptance of the emergency management performance grant. Nineteen B. The committee on finance to whom is referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the hydroelectric generation unit upgrade grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that grant. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be approved. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Vacan, and Shatnoff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Second.
It's been made and seconded to receive this, uh, committee report and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Also make a motion to suspend the rules. Marcos is here in case we have questions.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All in favor of suspending the rules if needed to ask Marcos Mararo any questions?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so moved. Okay.
All right, I'll try to do this one quickly. It's a little complicated, but we do have a spreadsheet, uh, that Marcos gave us. It's for the Parson Paper redevelopment area, uh, brownfields and everything. Um, if you go through a timeframe, and you can see this on TV or see the chart, um, Eversource, we did get two hundred and fifty thousand through that mitigation. Then Mass Development through the brownfield cleanup received two million dollars. In order to get that, which was the top allotment, you had to partner up with a project, which we'll get to that in a minute. HEDIC, uh, is going to make a, a loan of four hundred thousand to a business, Aegis, who we dealt with last meeting on a, uh, tax incentive. So really how this works is in order to take on this grant, which is the D O E R, which is the coal plant facility closure, getting money from that area, which was two million dollars, we're getting an allocation of one million of that two million. That will go through H G and E, who really is, um, doing a lot of work on their generators, roughly about seventeen point six million. In order to get the money from the coal plant facility, it'll flow through the H G and E who will take the one million. Then they'll take a million from their seventeen point six and flow it out to our redevelopment authority. Can't get it any other way. You need H G and E to step into the middle of this to take money and then funnel out their money in order to cover this. With that, as the two fifty, the one million, the two million, all together going to, um, redevelopment in order to, in essence, clean up Parsons Paper and then do a land transfer over to the Aegis Company, if I'm saying their name correctly, who will then, in essence, expand their business, which last meeting, we took them up for that ten-year tax incentive in order for no taxes. Um, HEDIC is then going to loan them, uh, four hundred thousand in order to do what they have to do. Um, so that's kind of like the nutshell of everything going on with these types of grants. Clean up the area, expand the business, put in a solar field, which is what they're doing, uh, as well, to then grow that business and get the jobs. One thing that did come up in the conversation on this was with regards to that tax break that we're giving over a ten-year period, somewhere under the assumption that was just for the new facility. That's how we normally do it. It's actually for everything. So the parcel that they have and the parcel that they're building, it's going to cover all of them for ten years. So with that, I, I know this is always a cliche that we throw out there that we're not business friendly and everything else. This is a huge investment by the city that we're taking on in order to have this thing grow. And it kind of is almost the other way in order to clean up this site. There's no other way we can pay for it ourselves. We, we need the, the grants or anything else and how they're coming in. If we didn't get this money, it's on us to clean up. So we thank Marcos for everything that he's done, as well as Joe McGivern as part of HEDIC and everything that they're doing. A lot of entities came together to give us the money that we're going to do to, to clean up this, the spot. But once again, don't be fooled. We made a big leap of faith here. Ten years on the full parcel. So that's just to be clear on how it works. Once again, Marcos is here. He gave us all the information. Show us Jim Lavelle, uh, from Hoyok Gas and Electric in order to try and get us all on the same page. Also, I won't forget, uh, H G and E is going to get an easement on this parcel in order to then potentially put in, um, uh, things that they need for, uh, Hoyok Gas and Electric. If there's any questions, uh, open up to myself or, or Marcos.
Counsel Vacan.
I just want to make one comment and I just want to underscore what Counselor McGee said. And the good taxpayers of the city do help the businesses when we give these special tax breaks to the businesses. We appreciate that the businesses coming in and helping us clean up a parcel that we absolutely don't have the resources right now to do. But I think we have to equally appreciate the taxpayers who at the end of the day are underwriting this support. Thank you.
And it should be noted through no fault of the cities, right? This was left to us by a defunct business that took a walk, left this on the city.
I wasn't pointing a finger, just make it a point.
Well, I, I mean, this is a business, you know, about being pro-business, right? The business left it with the city and we left it a third mess for us to go clean up. And luckily, we've got Marcos and, uh, waved the magic wand to come up with solutions. Uh, Counsel McGivern.
Now, you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. President. Um, there's not much to add to, uh, Counsel McGee's report, very thorough as always, and hits everything, uh, right on the, uh, on the button. I, I had to apologize to the committee because I misled the committee for a second on the, uh, the tax break because I was a little bit confused. When I never get confused, Mr. President, but I, I'm never afraid to admit when I'm wrong and I was wrong. But what, what Todd said is what I know we're not wrong about is the investment in Parsons Paper. If, if we want to develop that site, which is a key site to the Canal District, a key site to the re, redevelopment of that area, we would have to clean that up and not know what's going on in terms of what developer would come in to build the building. We have a known developer. We have a business that we appreciate that came to Hoyok from another community. We have a business that is growing. And although, and I agree with everything Todd said, we're giving quite a break to that company. The, uh, the dollars that they're, that they're not spending in, on taxes are being reinvested, originally immediately into the existing building that's left from Parsons Paper and then into the development of that entire lot itself. It's, it's good to know that over the ten years as we're working with them, that we have a plan in place. And I think the key is Parsons Paper is going to be cleaned up. We're, we know the, the details of what happens with the, uh, the Essex House and we're about to know the details of what happened with the Armory. Uh, we inherited Parsons Papers under the same type of circum, circumstances. And unfortunately, we've become responsible as a city for it. This is a plan that I think is, been in the works for well over a year, but it's a plan that gives us some, some good positive hope that the, uh, the future of that property will be nothing but positive.
Counsel Tomlin.
Great job by our, uh, chairman here. Todd had, had explained everything just, uh, the way it should have been. And, um, it was, it was a good meeting and Mr. Lavelle and, uh, Marcos, uh, thanks for the work you put into this. Uh, and this isn't something that's happened overnight, uh, number, a couple of years. And, uh, you're taking a, a lot, you're taking the building, uh, although the, the business is getting some breaks. You know, we're talking about business. We are pro-business here. We're helping out a company a number of years. Um, they're staying here. They're not going anywhere. They're going to move across and get take care of one building. They're going to provide jobs. And those people that are going to be working there are going to spend any money in Hoyok. So it's a, it's a complete spinoff and it's a, it's, it's a, it's a great addition for the city.
Any other comments? It just should be noted that, you know, how often do we hear about the city, you know, we're anti-business and all of this thing, but, you know, for this particular business that used to be there, Parsons Paper, look what, what they walked away from that the city and took on. There's a lot of expense related to that. Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adoption of nineteen B, the acceptance of the hydroelectric generation unit upgrade grant, a no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
By your vote, you've approved and accepted the provisions of that grant. Nineteen C is a report from the committee on finance to whom was referred a communication from the Hoyok Water Works requesting the opportunity for a meeting to discuss various financial matters relative to the department and its operations. Have considered the same, recommend the communication be, having been received, that we report back to the full council that, uh, we have in fact met with the water commission. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Vacan, and Shatnoff.
Make a motion to receive and adopt that's been complied with.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that they receive and adopt the committee report we report back to the full council that we have in fact met with the Water Commission, Counselors McGee, Tolman, Bacon, and Shatnoff.
Make a motion to receive and adopt that's been complied with.
Second.
Motion's permitted, seconded to receive and adopt the committee report that the order and communication has been complied with, under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, real quickly, Dave Conti and the commissioners came in, they sent us a communication asking that they would come in to sit with us to go over some of the things that were going on. The ultraviolet update of the facility that was built, it was built under budget by $100,000. They had a little issue on the computer that's supposed to go with the UV lighting, everything else that they installed, to go with their system, it was off by a bit, state came in and gave them some sanctions in order to be in compliance. It's really, it was just an adjustment issue, it's now up and running correctly. The real issue that they really wanted to come before us is, is this one right here, this little chart, that's not my 401K balance, although it looks very similar, it really represents water consumption from 2000 to present, and as you can see it, at one time it was 1.9, now it's down to about 1.2. Huge difference, of which they wanted to let us know, and they gave us a cheat sheet, water usage has decreased from 1,450 million gallons to 1.2 over the last 15 years, which is about a decrease of 35.6, 35%. Annual revenues for water usage has declined from 6 million to roughly 5 million, loss of roughly a million dollars. Last rate increase of one cent was done back in 2009, so on and so forth. So due to all these things that are happening with the Water Department, they have dipped into their reserve account of $400,000 to try and keep up bond costs and everything else, and the decline, and they're out. So they're looking to do a two-cent increase, like I said, the last increase was one cent back in 2009, in order to try and offset the issues that they're having. So they gave us a breakdown on everything. One of the issues that really was pointed out was, back in 2000, they had a full-time staff of 48. Today, they have full-time employees, 25. Five reservoirs, 5,000 acres of land, I think it's a little more than that, 25 people covering all that territory. I mean, they do a great job, I think this is one area, as we're calling for hiring freezes, this is one area that kind of needs employees, especially those who are of gaining of age, you don't have anyone coming from behind to learn and keep going, so it's, you're going to have a big learning curve as an issue as well. So that was addressed, and that was kind of the crux of the meeting.
Very good. Any other discussion? Counselor McGivern.
It's always a pleasure to hear from the Water Department, you know, when the manager, Dave Conti, speaks, he will give the credit to the commissioners, and when the commissioners speak, they give the credit right to Dave Conti. And I think it's a machine that works and is well-oiled and understands, through some very adverse times, have kept the Water Department, no pun intended, quite afloat. Mr. President, they are always willing to come in and talk to us and answer our questions. It's been a while, and we have some new members, I would suggest this spring that we go to them, and perhaps on a Saturday morning, take a tour of the facility and so on.
Yeah, that was my game plan, when the weather gets nicer, I think we'd like to do the tour of the facilities, go around, and we can go up to Westfield Road, and you can see a really, a great tour of the treatment facilities. It's really impressive, and they also take you out to Tike Harmony Reservoir, which is just a gem, just a real treasure of this community, and the foresight of our ancestors to have purchased that back in the 1930s, just a tremendous sense of foresight, and that's all the water that we use today, is from the Tike Harmony Reservoir. It's incredible. So, yes, we love our Water Department, they do a fantastic job, we're very blessed. Counselor Tolman.
Yes, we are blessed, they, we talked about the employees too a little bit, and 25 employees, and I know they do a stand-up job, and I want to give credit to them, I mean, you need the managers, you need the commissioners to get the job done, but the employees go in day in and day out with the work they have at hand, and with 25 people, and I know how hard they work, I see them out there, and, you know, all hours of the night too, when something breaks, they got to be there. And it's just amazing that they do the work they do with such little, you know, help. And I did take a tour, I think it might have been about 14 years ago now, that we went up to the reservoir up there in the Tike Harmony, and it was a great eye-opening experience, especially for the new counselors, to see that, to see the operation, see what's actually done, and how much water we got, how much, you know, millions and millions of gallons of water that we have to utilize, and that we just don't even, you know, hardly use anything today. So people drink up, you know, people at home drink the water, drink as much as you can, we could, we got plenty of it.
And we meet, you know, it's amazing the quality too, I mean, Hoyok is so blessed with so much to drink, this water, what a resource. Counselor McGee.
Yeah, one final thing I forgot to mention is, with regards to the sewer bill, you know, we had that ongoing discussion with the water bill and the sewer bill, they are in discussions on trying to figure out a way of combining the bills, not departments, combining the bill in order to, in essence, shut off water if you don't pay your sewer bill. As we all know, you get the bill, it's attached, you rip off the sewer, throw it in the trash, you pay your water bill, you can't shut off sewer. So, and we're always in the rears of, you know, five, $600,000 a year as our shortfalls. Therefore, they're in discussions as to how to do that, I know stuff is still lingering at the state and what to do there, but one of the points that should be noted, one of the concerns for them is, if you look at the water usage shortage that they're seeing, the decrease, if they shut off someone's water because of sewer, now they're not collecting revenues for the water, so it's a catch-22 for them. So that was brought up, the discussion.
It's tough to function with no water, though.
Yeah, no, understandable, and that was one of their concerns that they brought up at the meeting, which then, one of the thoughts was maybe in collecting the fee, you also put a fee in for your services for shutting off to try and counteract the loss you may have. So they're in that negotiations, they're working on it, but that was one of their concerns that be brought up.
Great. Okay, anything else? Counselor Sullivan.
I think going forward too, as we, you know, get an opportunity to tour the facilities, one of the hard questions that the city has to face is, with the declining use of water that we've had, why we're going through expensive maintaining five separate reservoirs. And, you know, that could be something we have to address here in the future.
Okay, very good. So I think we've exhausted the conversation, all in favor of adopting the committee report that it's been complied with?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's take a look here, 19D?
Can we take 19D and 19F as a package?
Okay, we like to take things as packages. So motion in favor suspending the rules to do 19D and 19F as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. 19D is a report from the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer of $51,970.76 from 2014 bond principal to liability insurance, and 19F, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer of $310,000 from bond principal to pay firefighters. Both of these committee reports have been reviewed and have been recommended for approval by Counselors McGee, Tolman, Bacon, and Shatnoff.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion's permitted, seconded to receive both of these, and to pass their first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I'll try and break it down, but they're kind of the same, and hopefully it's understandable and answer questions, but the $51,970.76 and then the $310,000 is really an error that was done in the treasurer's office, and Sandy Smith attested that, she said that in calculating the budget for the bond principal, she put in the wrong numbers. Also, we're going to have in finance another issue with bond principal of roughly $142,986, so a grand total of $505,282 of a mistake within the treasurer's office for bond principal, which now is, seeing how we can, it was put into the line item as an over allotment, it really should go back to free cash, in essence, to then be used for other things, so it's really just an accounting procedure. So here, we're going to move $51,970 to liability insurance to cover the shortfalls there. The big-ticket item is the 310, which goes to pay for the fire department, and really what happened here was, when we were doing the budget for the fire department, we have to remember, we had two grants that came in. We received one grant in 2012 for $668,000, and that, and then another one in 2014 for $1,069,000. What they represent is, when we received the grant from the state, it paid for firefighters. First grant was for five firefighters for two years, and then 2014, it was eight firefighters for two years. The catch there is, once you accept the money, you have to pay for those firefighters. If you don't, the state comes back and takes the full amount back. The issue was, somewhere in the budget cycle, they didn't fund for the proper amount of firefighters, which really represents 115 firefighters, the minimum that should be funded for due to the grants. Well, they didn't, and Dale, thank goodness Dale was doing a random audit over at the fire department, she discovered the issue, which is, you have a shortfall in funding the firefighters, and therefore, the shortfall is $310,000. If we don't put the 310 in, we're in violation of the grant, which then the state comes in and says, give us our million plus back. So that's really the ongoing problem. We didn't fund for it properly, we have to pay for it, or we're going to pay back more to the state. So, one thing that, you know, Chief Pond did come in, went through everything in detail, once again, we're at minimum staffing, which is 115, he normally needs 128. Due to all these issues, and us, you know, battling with overtime, he has come up with plans to do brownouts, as we all know about, take the deputy off a certain truck, put him back on other apparatus, and due to all these measures, him and the commissioners, they've saved roughly about $210,000 this year for financing. What you'll see in the next order is, they still have a shortfall for overtime, but if you look at it, they requested a certain amount, which was level funding, they were cut back to, I think, $400,000, the 105 puts them back at level funding, which is what we've been saying to everyone, level fund only. So they're not asking for more, they're just asking for level funding. So that'll happen for free cash when that comes up, but that's really how the numbers wash out. Bonding was done incorrectly, that money is now brought back in to then cover these two issues. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thoughts? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading on these two items?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second. Motion's permitted, seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, a clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of adopting these two transfers, a no vote is to deny both.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tolman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordaine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved both transfers. 19E. 19E is a report from the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order, a financial transfer in the amount of $105,000 from free cash to fire overtime. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be approved, Counselors McGee, Tolman, Bacon, and Shatnoff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading.
No Bacon on that one, second. Okay, motion's permitted, seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Already mentioned it, so.
You mentioned about...
105 for, this is the overtime for the fire department, which is level funding.
Level funding to last year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I agree that the 105 is level funding on the overtime from last year, we had had discussion relative to the acceptance of these grants in the past, and I just want to remind the council, and I fully expect that this will pass, but I just want to make the point from a budgetary point of view, that we already took money out of the stabilization fund, since we did that, we have found a million dollars in the budget that was found, half a million in insurance, half a million in bond, and so this $310,000 does not represent a level funding of the budget, while the point relative to the overtime is absolutely correct. And I'm not faulting the firefighters for this, so I don't want it to be interpreted as that, but I am pointing out the urgency with which we get our appointees in place, so that we have our checks and balances in place in the city on our finances, because, you know, it's just too often, too much, and we're in tough, tough times. I don't think the people on the ground should have to bear the brunt of it happening, but we have to stop it from happening, because we've got to really keep our house in order. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor McGivern.
Although I recognize the budget issues from the service point of view, we have a fire department that have seven apparatus that fight fires, which are manned on a daily basis by three firefighters, which is the bare minimum by national standards, national standards actually recommend four firefighters per apparatus. We have two attack vehicles, we are first responders for most of the medical issues that come into 911, and I think the keeping the, the best I think they can do is keeping, you know, in touch with what the overtime budget is, but at the same time, mindful that those apparatuses and attack vehicles are so important to the service that they provide to the city, and I think the $105,000 will be well-spent towards the service they provide.
Any other discussion?
Just on the numbers, real quickly, they average about 7,000 calls a year for 911, roughly 2,500 is what the fires to go out and respond to, and in most cases, they're the first to arrive, even before AMR. So, those are the numbers.
We have the fire service calls, number?
I think, no, he didn't give the fire service calls, no.
Any other discussion?
Just let me know, the firefighters work two straight 24-hour shifts, is that, is that how they do it?
No, I don't believe it, they're two back-to-back.
One 24-hour, then a day off, then they do 24, then they get five off.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's one day on, one day off, one day back on, and then five days off?
Correct.
Okay, and how long has that, Dan, how long has that been in place?
Two years.
Two years, three years, three years maybe.
Okay, so just, if I may...
And it was going to save overtime.
And so that's, it's going to save overtime, so overtime was clearly a big issue before this came into place, was it, to your recollection, Mr. President, was it to this extent, or is it hard to recall?
The overtime hasn't gone down.
Because if I remember, we didn't cut the fire department budget last year.
No.
We didn't, we didn't make one single cut, that passed as submitted by the chief.
Two years in a row, no cuts.
I thought we cut it the year prior, but if I'm mistaken, I'll stand corrected, but I know, I know for FY16, we didn't cut a dime.
After this budget, we didn't, I don't recall, I don't recall, but I'll stand corrected, if, I'll have to go back to my notes, for FY15, but, you know, we'll, I'll have to double-check.
I'll tell you.
Okay, Counselor McGee, what?
You're correct in that we didn't cut anything from their line items.
Right.
However, what was submitted by the chief was cut by the mayor.
Correct.
That's the difference.
So I just want to make sure we're good on our vocabulary here, we, Hoyok City Council, did not cut the fire department two fiscal years in a row. Counselor Shatnoff.
He cut it the year before.
FY14, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Presnahan.
One thing I just want to, I want to point out to my colleagues is that, you know, the fire department definitely responds first to everything, whether it's a fire, or a, you know, any other sort of emergency medical call, and, you know, we're not getting any benefits of that. They show up with their tactical units, and another company comes in with their ambulance, and they drive off with the patient that's responding, so we get nothing out of that, and they're happy with that, but we've talked about the ambulance service, you know, Chief LaFon had a multi-page document describing about how the benefits of the city of Hoyok having its own ambulance service, as many communities our size and smaller than ours have their own ambulance services that the fire department provides, there certainly is, you know, comments and questions about the benefits of that, but again, you know, we're spending gas money and we're taking guys off regular duty to respond to calls just because they're the first responders. If they're showing up to respond to a house call because there's a heart attack, then the city of Hoyok should get the benefits of that insurance when they, when they can relocate that person to a hospital, and they can't with these tasks, we have no ambulances, we have no, you know, quote-unquote buses, and in my conversation with the fire department, they're very enthusiastic about having that ability to do that, and they're willing to. Many of the, if not the majority of the firefighters now have their EMT certification, so we have to keep in mind, when they come before us, or we have to push the chief, perhaps, to present us with a plan that allows us to have the monies to buy an ambulance and get that service going in the city of Hoyok. Chicago does it, South Hadley does it, smaller communities than us even are doing that, and yet, you know, they're the first responders, they get that 911 call, that tactical unit shows up, two guys in the front seat, and they, you know, clear the patient, but then, you know, AMR shows up, they take the body off, or they take the patient off, and they get the benefits of that, and I use that loosely, because there's certainly no benefits to being in an ambulance, as we all know, but we really have to, you know, get some sort of ambulance program in place.
Counselor Roman.
I just rise, Mr. President, to say I completely agree with Counselor Presnahan, and based off of that, I, there's currently two orders that I filed, and I know there's other orders pending before finance, with regards to not only the ambulatory units, but also being the first medical dispatchers, exactly what Counselor President's saying, you call 911 right now, any medical call goes to Springfield to then be dispatched out here to Hoyok, we can be benefiting on that, so there's two orders pending on that, and this goes to a larger issue, Mr. President, that again, I rise for this call again, that we filed back in March a balanced budget order to have these kinds of budgetary conversations that my colleague, Counselor Bacon, I completely agree with. There's five of us on this committee, I look forward to having these discussions, we know this is coming down the pike, and we know that we have to prepare for FY17, and continue to prepare for the budget coming up, I rise to say that these conversations need to happen ahead of time. We're coming closer to May, June, July, I know this is my first budgetary process, but it makes sense to me exactly what we're saying, all these things we should be addressing now, including discussing revenue, sorry, revenue generating streams, like my colleague, Counselor Presnahan, saying, we should be, even at best, a backup ambulatory unit for the city, to get some kind of financial investment, and then in this department, say, if this is general revenue generating streams in your department, that's it, this covers your costs, and so I think that I rise in support of having those conversations and getting these things out of committee, including our five-member committee that will meet with the mayor's office hopefully soon, waiting for a response back, to have these deeper conversations around the budget, ways to address the structural deficit, and I thank you, Todd, and your committee, and all the work that you do, but to prepare ahead of time and not after the fact. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McGee.
We did touch on it a little, because the chief was here on the ambulance service, pros and cons to it, I've always been in favor of it, and I did throw the question right at him, how many do you need, three, four, where are your locations? And he said, you know, roughly four would be needed, but then the issue becomes is, the amount going in to that, the amount going out to get the patients and then transport them is, the insurance doesn't always cover it. In a lot of cases, I wouldn't say most, but in a good portion of cases, no money comes back, because there's no insurance coverage, still got to take the patient there. So that has to be factored in.
How much does Medicaid actually pay?
Right, and that's the other one, which then goes to, what I think, Mr. Roman pointed out very correctly is, well, maybe we don't have to do the full boat thing, but maybe a backup one where you have only two, and they respond somehow, you got to figure out We get a, so for us, we're putting the money up, we're not getting anything, or even a chance to get anything back, and that is the problem.
Okay, Counselor Presnahan?
Thank you, I mean, the problem is that many chiefs, when they take over as chief, have different opinions on this matter. And I think, I believe in my conversations with several previous chiefs, it is a revenue stream that we can get in. If we have to file an order, and I'm sure Counselor Roman will join me with this, to set up some sort of committee to have a study to look at this, this has been done, this has been done, and it needs to get done. And as my esteemed colleague, Counselor McGee, points out, that, you know, sometimes they pick up people that they may not have the insurance, but oftentimes, they may, the folks that are getting picked up by an ambulance do. And the fact of the matter is that, you know, there's three, from my understanding, there's three ambulances that are Springfield and Hoyoke, so if there's an ambulance in Chicagoo, guess who's showing up first? Who always shows up first, let me rephrase that, is the Hoyoke Fire Department. And you know what they do? They spend their gas, they spend their time, and they get nothing, they get nothing out of it, except the satisfaction of helping someone, which is huge. But, you know, we really need to have an ambulance service in the city of Hoyoke, I'm a strong proponent for that, and I really think that we need to get this done. And I would be more than happy, and I will be filing an order for our next meeting to get this done, and encourage the chief, our current chief, to be on board with that, to ensure that we have some revenues coming in to support the fire department, because we don't want blackouts in the fire department. We do not want apparatus not being serviced, because we don't have the money.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, whatever we decide on this issue, it's all well and good, but as long as it's better than the service that we have now, but without the service we have now, I wouldn't be sitting here today.
Counselor McGivern?
All good points, Mr. President, and I know the numbers are there, and we've studied them over the years. Although I'd love to see the fire department run the ambulance service, I think the concerns we have to overcome are the cost of an ambulance and the life expectancy. You know, it's well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to equip an ambulance, and their life expectancy is not, maybe a little bit more than a fire apparatus, but certainly it can be shortened under circumstances. One of the biggest things is the billing, and I think we find out we can overcome that. But the private companies get a bulk of their profit from transportation, which is nothing to do with an emergency. And we would not get that, no municipality gets the transportation part of it, and that's the, that's kind of like the guaranteed money, you know, if you're going to take patient X from Hoyoke Hospital to Bay State Hospital, or patient X from Bay State Hospital home, or to a nursing home, or to a retirement home, whichever, it's all money that's there, and it's all money that the service gets, and it's just downtime from emergencies where they run, where they run the ambulances to do that. What are they looking at, and I look forward to talking about it again, there's a couple firefighters that have done a lot of research over the last two years, and I think they'd be more than willing to come in with the chief's permission to talk to us about it.
Mr. President? Yeah, Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, these are all great issues, there are other issues, though, this is a transfer of one hundred and five thousand dollars, and I'd like to get to that.
Yep. Counselor, did I see a hand up over at the top of the key here? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, just, I can speak on this from experience also, you know, if we can get over the financial burden, it'd be well worth having. When the cracker manufacturing collapsed, I was on the fourth floor, it was Hoyoke firefighters that came in, hauled me, you know, stabilized me, hauled me down four floors, first responders took good care of me, and then I was dumped into a ambulance service, and what I found really offensive about the whole thing, hauled off to Springfield, and where I was treated and released that afternoon. And I don't know why I wasn't taken to Hoyoke Hospital, I was given no choice in the matter whatsoever, and, you know, the AMR, whoever it was that took me, got the credit and got paid for it. So I think it's well worth looking into if we can get over the financial hurdle.
Those pesky finances, they always seem to rear their ugly head. And at the moment, we have that first reading here, a hundred and five thousand dollar transfer of free cash to fire overtime, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
opposed, so moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of the financial transfer, a no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the transfer request for the fire department overtime. Next up is nineteen G, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer in the amount of thirty thousand from free cash to veterans' benefits, have considered the same, recommend the order be approved, Counselors McGee, Tallman, Vacan, and Shatner.
Make your motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Second.
Been made and seconded, receive and adopt. The committee report passed its first reading, under discussion, Counselor McGee?
Yeah, quickly, Jim Mahoney came in, he's doing a lot better last year, he came in for a WAPA, I think it was a hundred and ninety thousand, he was way off on the estimates. This year, it's only thirty thousand, as we know, it's a guesstimate each year for veteran benefits, and how many clients still have. Currently, he says the average is about fifty-seven clients or vets, widows or vets, a month, which averages about thirty-two thousand a month. So therefore, he kind of guesstimated to get through the rest of the year, what he'll need is another thirty thousand along what was budgeted for the year. So actually dwindle it down from what happened last year, of which is a hundred percent reimbursable by the state. But as we learned from that one, we usually don't receive it until the next fiscal year, I think, is how it comes in. So we do get it back, we just pay it upfront, then again, back later, but much later.
What percentage?
I think the hundred percent.
Seventy-five? I thought it was seventy-five, I was under the impression.
I think he said a hundred percent for the, he has two pieces here, it's fifteen thousand for one, which I think is the seventy-five, the other one is for...
Funeral and stuff like those types of things, a hundred, yeah.
And that's where the other fifteen thousand is.
General benefits or something.
So it's two stages for a total of thirty.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Tallman?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that when Jim came in, we talked about the benefits, and actually, he's doing the outreach, we talked a couple years ago about outreach to veterans and widows, and he was very, you know, very working, very hard with the, at the War Memorial, trying to bring in benefits for people that actually need them, and I think he stated too, that, I don't know if it's true or not totally, but there is no homeless veterans in our community, so, which is a big thing.
That's good, we hope that's, we can only hope that's true. Anybody, Counselor McGivern?
Just enough good things cannot be said about Mr. Mahoney, he came to us, you know, near the end of his career, and we're just so lucky to have him, because of the vast knowledge of the system, whether it's the local benefits or the federal benefits and the federal services that are provided. I just wanted to let everybody know, though, he's also worked hand in hand, the Hoyoke District Court, the Mass Trial Court recently designated as a veterans' court, it's slowly getting up and running, it's doing very well, and Mr. Mahoney has worked hard with the powers to be here in Hoyoke to lend a helping hand and a connection, and they're all also very impressed with him.
Very good, any other discussion? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of the financial transfer of thirty thousand dollars for veterans' benefits, a no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the benefits transfer. Now nineteen H, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that all departments report to the city council any projected financial department shortfalls that they might have, or have already requested funds for such matters, have considered the same, recommend the order's been complied with, Counselors McGee, Tallman, and Shatner.
Take up nineteen I as well, take it as a package.
Motion's been seconded to suspend the rules, take up nineteen I as a package with this, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the auditor provide a list of nine transfer items and budget transfers that have occurred in all departments from November to present, where such funds were transferred to, have considered the same, recommend that this has been complied with, Counselors McGee, Tallman, Vacan, and Shatner.
Make your motion, receive and adopt, that's been complied with.
Okay, motion's been seconded to receive and adopt. The committee reports that both of these, nineteen H and nineteen I, have been complied with, under discussion, Counselor McGee?
Yes, Bellamy came in, he did give us a spreadsheet of roughly what was going on with some of the numbers, actually, some department heads reached out with regards to this and said where they might have a shortfall, or if they don't have one at all. Not all of them did, so if they didn't respond, I took it as if they're okay. So if they come back later, we'll at least know. Kara reached out, told us potentially for legal matters, the clerk, the city clerk gave us some, and both chiefs for police and fire gave us information, so did Marcos, Marcos said he was okay. Police gave us new numbers as to what they're looking for with regards to police overtime, police buyback, car issues, same thing with fire, which they're going to have a fuel slash energy shortage, or a potential buyback with one of their retirees. So with that, all these new numbers were flying around as to what's going to be free cash, if we're going to find more money somewhere else in the budget to try and address these things. So did have a good conversation, read the emails as to who did respond. One of the things that really came out that was kind of disheartening was, in trying to get this information, it's almost as if you're pulling teeth. And when I asked him Bellamy questions, he had answered, he didn't answer until finally, he said, well, you didn't ask it this way. And my response to that is, I shouldn't have to.
Exactly.
We're all on the same team here, which is, you're in a shortfall, which we're trying to answer it. I'm not trying to micromanage. If we just took everything that was given to us a month ago, and just said, pass it, the two hundred thousand for overtime, the one sixty-eight for buyback, we being the negative, due to us just sitting back and saying, can we talk about it, can we go through the budget again, not to micromanage, but try and find some help here, you know, based on all these new numbers, we might have eighty-eight thousand left, might, could be fifty-three thousand based on what Sandy said. So those numbers are different between those two departments. So as you can see, no one's really talking to each other, and we have to work together. So to me is, I shouldn't have to ask every question in every type of frame to get to the answer. If you know what we're looking for, just provide it. So it's complied with for now, I thanked the department heads who did reach out to us, whether via email or coming in to try and address this stuff. If you go by what we passed tonight, forget about the bond stuff, we're roughly about five twenty-eight for free cash, with the overtime for fire department, with the thirty thousand for the veterans, we're roughly down to three ninety-three. Which then is, new numbers are coming in from everyone else, and like I said, legal might have an issue, fire might have shortfalls with buybacks in energy, we know about whether or not we're going to bond, but we have an issue with the clerk's office, which is, the voting machines are awful, they're old, they're out to date, you need new ones. These are all expenses you have to start addressing, or, you know, you just run out of money.
Yeah, big problems. Counselor Roman?
Yes, Mr. President, I wasn't able to attend the finance committee meeting, even though I wanted to attend, it's critically important for me, but I'm actually thankful to the committee chair, as the newer member of the council, listening, reading the minutes, going back on the internet and being able to watch the committee hearings, and a few things struck out to me as a newer council member, is exactly what my esteemed colleague is saying, the almost hoops you have to go through sometimes to get answers is difficult, and I'm looking into actually possibly, and through you, Mr. President, or any of my colleagues who might know this, and Counselor McGivern might have an answer, I know that in the city of Springfield and other municipalities in the state of Massachusetts, actually, the council has the authority to call and audit a department, to actually go through those nine items and call those things, because some departments, it's like, difficult to get those answers. I know I've tried my best since I've started here to go through and meet with as many department heads as I can, some have been very forthcoming and open, and others, there is that resistance. So I'm looking into, unless it exists currently, that authority, because again, we should be able to just have those conversations and discussions, not around micromanaging, but around saying, hey, let's talk about that, or why is that being spent that way? And that's our duty to the taxpayers and to the constituents. So unless that currently exists in the city of Hoyoke, I don't know, maybe Counselor McGivern can answer or care from the law department in the future, I'm looking into that, because for me, it will truly help me when I have to vote on the budget, when I have to make those decisions. And I do commend you, Mr. Chairman, and your committee members, and everyone who has to deal with this, but it's truly informative for both the taxpayers and myself to be able to have those answers readily available. So I just wanted to commend the chairman and offer that, that I'm looking into that.
I think you'll see that section forty-eight of the charter requires any department head to provide you any information that you request in writing. So if you have specifics out of questions, they're required to give you a written response at a minimum, that's at section forty-eight of the charter. Next up, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, on this order, I think this should be an annual order about halfway through our budget fiscal year, and it's something that I think is useful, because we all know, even in good times, surprises can be very hectic and very difficult to work with. Earlier, Counselor Roman gave the report of the joint committee, one of the questions I asked the receiver is an issue that's always been near and dear to me, and that's unemployment insurance. And the receiver told us, he was, I know the mayor reached out to him, I think, Mr. President, you might have too, but he was aware of the issue of the way the school department does business can cause problems in our unemployment insurance account. This order has been passed out to every department head, I'm told, the receiver told us they're keeping within budget around three hundred thousand dollars, anticipating some because of teachers that were certified, didn't get their certification, and what's going on with the schools in terms of a number of different changes. Mr. Judge from the personnel department has not given us any shortfall, it's March second, going on March third, so I'm guessing there is no shortfall in that account, but I think this order does wonders to give us a heads up around this time of year. The auditor, we are lucky to have Bellamy Smith as the acting auditor, and he's there only because we have a vacancy, because the auditor of some thirty years, Mr. Smith, left the city for a different job. When he left the city, the mayor appoints the acting auditor, as we all know, and that acting auditor is important to get us through a transitional period. It's been a little bit longer than normal, although the last time it happened, it was like that for about two years, before the city council stepped up and appointed an auditor. We need to step up and appoint an auditor that's independent of the mayor, independent of the council, and can give us the same answer, or the only answer, to everybody that asks. If one answer is given to us, and a different answer is given to room one, and I'm not saying Bellamy's doing this, but when he's appointed by the mayor, and the mayor, and they're going over the budget, you know, it's a lot different when you're working on a budget in room one than when you're working on it in public. We need to be on the same page when it comes to the budget, and I think the only way we do it is, and I think Bellamy is about had it, I think he's, he thought he was in retirement before he offered to come back to work with us, but I think it's time that we appoint a permanent auditor. With that, Mr. President, that's an editorial, but I hope that we can get going on the advertising and the interviews.
We have an order on it.
Well, you know. I can still see him, Counselor President, you know?
Yeah, I gotta get a stool, I never did. My term will be up before I ever get my stool.
I gave him that trick, I said, when the longer the councilors start talking, I don't know why he did it when I said it, you know?
Might be timely to just discuss the two positions that we have open, I can tell you that I have been forwarded a name by the mayor, as well as the city auditor, that is someone who seems on their face very qualified, so I'm going to have a conversation with this person, but they seem interested to apply for the auditor position. This is an ongoing, it's out there, they're looking for candidates for auditor, hopefully somebody really steps forward that's a really high-quality candidate. Anybody knows out there that wants to be the next auditor of Hoyoke, please step forward. The next thing is, in terms of tax collector, not a lot of candidates, I think we got one, maybe two candidates, the deadline was just last week, so, you know, we'll have to go by what we got for tax collector appointments. But absolutely, we need high-quality candidates, I've asked HR to turn over, you know, turn over every stone to get us, and I think it's at a point where if this last round of advertising does not come back with the type of candidates we need, we need to talk about, you know, is what it is. Or we're gonna have to, you know, either radically increase the pays, you know, because I believe the tax collectors like in the low 60s, the auditors in the mid 70s, you know, maybe if you keep going, jumping the pay, maybe eventually you get somebody good, but we'll see. But that is the latest on it. I just want folks to know, these things are out there, that there is active searches going on for these positions, you know? Can't be filled soon enough with high-quality people, that's it, you know? Okay, so having said that, we have H and I before us, that these two items have been complied with. Any further discussion? Counsel Sullivan.
Just to follow up on what you just said about the high-quality people, you know, when you're after somebody in an auditor's position, or, you know, positions of its nature, you're out competing in the general business world now. You got kids coming out of Bentley with no job experience at all, and, you know, other good accounting schools, their starting pay is $60,000 a year. So, I mean, despite our tight, you know, the problems we have in here, if we're gonna, and if we're gonna attract the top people that you need for these jobs, we are gonna have to pay and advertise at levels higher than $60,000 to fill these positions with people like Bellamy Schmidt, all right? We're lucky to have him, but just, you see what it is to try and replace someone like that. And even to the point of where we're at, in the situation with the mayor of Hoyoke, all right, when we've got competing around here, if we're gonna try, if we're really gonna open the field and attract the top people to compete for these jobs, you can't have a city manager across the river making $40,000 more. Which job would you take?
Right.
So I think all of these are things we're gonna have to look at over the next couple of years here.
Good points.
You wouldn't know the name of that city manager, would you?
It's a very nice name.
That's great. Yes, absolutely, it's a conversation. And I, I mean, for a lot of these positions, I can tell you, for trying to work to fill these in the private sector, I'm very well aware of the competition it is to fill these type of positions in the finance, I mean, that's what I do for my regular job. And it is highly competitive, and top salaries are being paid now for these type of positions in the private sector.
Just in closeout, I would tell everybody here and the public out there, you're not gonna find a good auditor for $60,000.
Well, that job is 75, but, oh, even, yeah, yep. As we said, we're trying to get high-quality candidates.
Like he said, a good auditor.
We're looking for high-quality candidates, but, no, you could, high-quality person, I don't know about high-quality auditor.
With a question?
Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor that these two orders have been complied with?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Moving right along, 19J, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a transfer request of $200,000 from free cash to police overtime. Have considered the same, recommend it be denied. Counselors McGee, Tallman, Bacon, and Shatnoff.
JK and L, can we take up as a package?
Sure. Dispend the rules to take JK and L as a package, all in favor?
Aye.
Also moved, K is a transfer request of 168 from free cash to sick leave buyback, that was requested for the police department. L is 3,500 from free cash to extra clerical help. All of these are recommended for denial. Counselors McGee, Tallman, Bacon, and Shatnoff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, to deny?
Yep, motions been made at seconded to receive the committee reports, and pass the first reading, that they all be denied. Under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yep, not being mean to deny them, it's just that the makers or the requesters are asking that they're redoing the numbers. So 200,000 is gonna come back, I think it's on tonight's agenda at 150, the 168's gonna come back at 134, something of that nature. And then the 3,500, Sandy said that she took it from the assistance job, because she moved over to the collector. So that line item has money in it for salary, so she took the 3,500 out of that, which then dropped it down to, I think, 13,000 left in that line item for that position. So, since she now took it from another item and she's using it, she doesn't need this. So, deny them all, simply because they've either been paid somewhere else, or there's gonna be a new request coming in.
Thoughts, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made at seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, recall the roll. A yes vote is to deny all three transfers, because the committee recommendation is that they be denied. A no vote is to approve the transfers. Clerk, call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you have denied all three of those transfers. We had no public safety committee reports for this particular meeting, no public service committee reports for this particular meeting, and now we're on to DGNR. First up is 22A. The Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application for renewal of a home occupation permit of Mr. Gerardo Ramos of 275 Sargent Street, Hoyoke, for marine reef habitat, to increase the flow of customers from zero to five per month. Have considered the same, recommend the application be approved, allowing up to five customers, four or five customers per month. Also, all other conditions on the home occupation permit will stay the same. Counselors Bartley, McGivern, Tallman, and Roman.
Motion to receive, adopt the committee report, and grant the special permit?
Yep, motions been made at seconded to the committee report be received and adopted, and the special permit be granted as amended. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, that pretty much summed it up. But Mr. Ramos came in and gave a really good presentation. His business is marine reef habitat, it's basically in his garage, started in 2008. No one spoke in opposition, President Jordane spoke in favor of it, and the committee thought this was a more than worthwhile permit to grant. And so, I'll take any questions, or if anybody else wants to speak, go ahead. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the special permit, granting the renewal as amended, a no vote is to deny it.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you have granted the renewal of the special permit for Mr. Ramos, as amended. 22B is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit petition of CCATT Site Manager for a special permit for modification of an existing wireless telecommunications facility on Scott Tower Road. Recommend that the application be adopted with the following conditions. One, width of pole shall not exceed 10 feet. Two, height of pole shall not exceed 184 feet. Three, antennas on poles shall not exceed 36, with the exception of the ones for public safety. Number four, public safety antenna space shall be offered as a right, and shall be at a height of not less than 132 feet. Number five, the monopole will be gray galvanized steel. Six, monopole will be located 43 feet west of existing pole as per plot plan. Seven, the existing pole shall be removed no less than six months after the new pole goes on air. Applicants shall communicate this date in writing to the city building commissioner. Number eight, if the owner ceases to use the pole as a telecom facility, then the pole shall be removed within six months' time. Number nine, existing condition shall remain in place with one exception, the condition that the pole be a flagpole style is rescinded. Committee recommends that it be adopted with those conditions. Counselors Bartley, McGivern, Tallman, and Roman.
Motion to receive, adopt the committee report, to grant a special permit with the aforementioned conditions.
Motion's been made at seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, and approve with the aforementioned conditions. Under discussion, Mr. Bartley.
Yeah, Mr. President, I think you pretty much summed it up in reading the order. We had the applicant in twice on February, once on February 1st, and once on the 29th, and just really a comprehensive report. You know, they had a big-time law firm putting together a lot of really helpful applications, followed up by two pretty in-depth letters, you know, to answer a lot of questions from you, obviously. Mr. President is a Ward 6 counselor, really looking out for the Ward. They had some great photographs, simulations, that sort of thing. We didn't really have anybody, per se, speak in favor. We did have one abutter spoke in opposition. He's a former Hoyoker, and he owns a corporation that owns about three acres of wooded land that abuts the property. His concern was the pole itself, and whether, if some tragic event happened, that he felt his property was in quote-unquote "fall zone." The committee reviewed it, the committee heard a response from the applicant's attorney. The applicant's attorney, I thought his, at least the committee thought, I think, his answers were that basically the pole itself, the design of them, the manufacturer's, the design is that the poles, they don't fall, they buckle, I guess, but worst-case scenario, that would be the case. So, he said the manufacturer's been making these for 30 years, and there's been not one that's fallen to the ground. So, with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thoughts, comments, questions? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the special permit with the aforementioned conditions listed. Clerk, call the roll, please.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you have granted the special permit for the cell tower as listed. Thank you. Item number 22C is from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application to amend an existing special permit to allow removal of the associated screening as required for Bell Atlantic Mobile of Mass Corp., Limited, doing business as Verizon Wireless at 485 South Street, MAP 112, Block 00, Parcel 024. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be given, leave to withdraw without prejudice. Counselors Bartley, McGivern, Tallman, and Roman.
Receive, adopt the committee report.
Motion's been made at seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Applicants didn't need a special permit, and wrote a letter to that effect, and therefore we gave a leave to withdraw.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of allowing the withdrawal, leave to withdraw, and recommend committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. No charter and rules committee reports for this particular meeting? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Real quick.
There it is. There it is. There it is.
Take a picture, take a picture.
Wow. Thanks to our administrative assistant, we have a red folder. Five orders were filed since January 1st, we'll put a priority on those. There are 10 orders that Ryan was able to research and find that have been filed since 2014. I'm gonna contact the makers of the orders, taken a little bit from Counsel Bacon, on some of these older stuff, to see where we are and where we want to go. But if anybody can fill in any blanks, or think there's something missing, just let me know, and we'll research it between Ryan and the good help of the city clerk's office. We can always find an order sooner or later.
So, meeting what, like September?
I think the chairman of DGR City's not gonna meet after April until September, so we'll have some time to, we'll have some time to do it in between. Soon.
Great, great. Progress, progress, that's what we're about here. Motions, orders, and resolutions. As you know, item 24 was already handled, which now brings us to item number 25, which comes to us by way of Counsel McGee. The city charges sales tax or license fee similar to a taxi cab on Uber, Lyft, Rideshare companies. Ordinance?
Ordinance, yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made at seconded to receive and refer to ordinance, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. 26. Order introduced by Counsel McGee, order that the Fire Alarm Division provide the Finance Committee with a detailed breakdown of each traffic light and crosswalk signals, intersection area that is in need of repair. The report should show all costs for replacing and redoing each area. Also, report, should, the report should give a final cost for all intersections, along with a list of the top 10 most troubled areas. In conjunction with this order, the DPW is requested to review each intersection, determine if a new curb or sidewalk section will be needed, and that cost should be shown as well.
Finance, but also, I know Counsel Bartley has filed an order with regards to bonding for your issue as well, for bonding.
And we do have the list of the top 10 intersections.
Yeah, but this is mostly the cost per intersection, depending on who you talk to. And I did get a call from the Alarm Division today, and we're playing phone tag, but this is really to get to the crux of the problem, which is, if you look at every intersection, this one costs 10,000, this one 400,000, what have you. Also, seeing how our sidewalks, depending on where you are, are having troubles, especially the curb cuts that get up and down them for handicap accessibility. If you're gonna do a big bond, whether it's just for 10 or 20, whatever it is, that should be incorporated in there to say, "Do the curbs as well." So, kinda trying to get everything in all the angles, especially the crosswalks, certain areas, they're just...
Terrible.
Well, they don't work.
Yeah, right, right.
So, trying to get a detailed list in order to see the cost, and maybe if we have to pick and choose, depending on what we're gonna do for bonding.
Okay, so motion is to send the Finance with a copy to DPW?
And Alarm Division.
And Alarm Division, okay. Under discussion, Counsel Brezneren.
Briefly, I'd like to be signed on to the order if I could. And also, I know two people that have personally been hit by vehicles, one of which works in City Hall, on the blinking light at High and Cabot Street. So, I mean, this is, we've talked about this before, this is a million-dollar operation. Again, where the money's gonna come from, hopefully through a bond, but, you know, really, really needs to be addressed soon. There's blinking lights everywhere in the City Hall, as we all know. So I'd like to be added on to the order.
Without objection, adding Counsel Brezneren?
I'd like to be added as well.
And adding Counsel Valentin, without objection.
Did Josie wanna sign on?
She did. Is that a yes or no? Can I add her?
Yeah, she got me my easy button, so if, you know, if we're gonna sign on to orders.
Oh, we got props. Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, that's Counsel Soto's former desk, that's why. Was that in the desk, or is that a new one?
Inside, yeah.
Oh, very good, very good, good. Counsel Tallman?
Yeah, if you have in mind, I'd like to sign on that, to that order too. We had a brief discussion at my job.
Sign on Counsel Soto while you're at it.
Okay, you're, you've been added on now.
We had a brief discussion.
Now it's official, Counsel Tallman's added on.
We had a brief discussion at our job today. We had a safety talk, and it's somebody's, these intersections in High Street, actually, where people are going through there, with actually a postal vehicle. Somebody had let somebody go through, and a postal vehicle got hit. So, you know, with these flashing red lights, and of course, pedestrians getting hit, it's very, you know, difficult. And I know it's costly, but it is being known that, you know, people just have to beware, and to be cautious, and always look out for the other, the other person.
Absolutely. Counsel McGivern?
The Alarm Division is incredible what they do, especially when it's an emergency. Most of these lights are designed, I think, I think we all know, to go to flashing when there's a problem, a malfunction, so that, you know, one lane is, one direction is designated a stop, and one is designated a caution. I got a call from a constituent a couple Saturdays ago, up at Lower Westfield Road, and right at CBS and Whiting Farms Road, and what was happening was, is part of it malfunctioned, and they went to blinking red and blinking yellow. But part of it, which was the right-hand turn lane coming off Whiting Farms Road, and the lane coming up from Mount Marie on Lower Westfield Road, were still green and green arrows. So some cars were going through the green, thinking they had the green, not knowing that the cars coming at them were going through a blinking yellow. Could have been a near disaster. The, that, a quick call to the Fire Alarm, to the Fire Department, immediately sent a truck up to put it into some safety mode, so that we could get through it. And Mr. President, that constituent just happened to be my daughter, who was coming out of CBS. Quick to think. She said, "Dad, there's something wrong here."
And that's a new light.
She didn't call any of us?
She knew where the goal council resident, yeah. She asked for your number.
Opposed? So moved.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine as a package.
Second.
Okay, motions made, seconded, to suspend, uh, the rules to take twenty-seven, eight, and nine as a package with abbreviated reading. Um, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Twenty-seven is to transfer one hundred and thirty-four, eight ninety-six from free cash to sick leave buyback. This is for the police department. Twenty-eight is to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand from free cash to overtime for the police department. Twenty-nine is to transfer twenty thousand from free cash to motor vehicle repairs for the police department. So, all of these are police department.
Finance.
Motion is to send them all to finance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Let me just make my notes here. Thirty and thirty-one, we already took care of. Thirty-two, thank you, comes to us from Counselor Sullivan. Order that the Director of Economic Development, along with the representative of the HGNE and any other department he deems beneficial, appear before the city council. Questions were left unanswered regarding development and financing issues surrounding the Parsons site, which Mr. Marrero felt should be dealt with in executive session. In addition, questions regarding the one million dollar D O E R grant, the recent request for multiple pilot programs, and the location of future solar arrays all need further clarification. D G N R?
Yeah, could I address this for a minute, so?
Oh, yeah, but I, we need a motion first. So, motion is to send it to the D G N R?
Send it to G N R, yes.
Okay. Motion on the floor is made and seconded to send it to D G N R. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. The, the reason I'm coming, circling back to this, um, everybody knows we were under a lot of pressure to, uh, get something done with Parsons. I'm in no way opposed to, uh, what's being done in there. It was a, a near impossible situation we faced with the remediation of that site. Uh, what I, what I'd like to do is, we, we've had all of a sudden a bunch of stuff come to us at the last minute. We don't get much time to study it. We're not made aware of these plans or what's going on ahead of time. Um, I, I'd like to get, uh, economic development, HEDIC, redevelopment authority, and as I say here, um, any of these other, uh, Hoyok Gas and Electric especially, uh, together in front of D G R, right? There, there's a lot of questions about what's going on with easements, um, when you take an easement, uh, what it does for future development to that site, um, and other sites throughout the city. We've got questions or talk about on this Parsons site, there's gonna be, uh, solar arrays, uh, there's still some discussion to be had whether that's, uh, something we really wanna see on that section that's really, you know, next to Canal Walk and other developments that are going on. Uh, it, it also ties together with other things I saw coming through the pilot, uh, the finance committee. All these pilot programs, um, which are coming really with incomplete or, um, it seems to me some misleading financing ish, uh, things. Uh, Tony DeLude was really put on the spot, I thought, and, uh, not, not being given full information to work with. Uh, it seemed to me we were being led to believe that there was a, in these pilot programs, a, a big benefit for us, and the, the way it's being presented, um, will lead, lead to some wrong decisions, uh, where we can expect five thousand dollars, uh, for a megawatt, which is true. But none of these sites will produce near that amount. It'll be a fraction of that amount. So, we're giving away these pilot programs. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's time to get advanced notice on this stuff, so it's not coming to us as an emergency thing that we have to approve right away, and we can see what else is going on and tie this stuff together.
Yes, and to further augment what you're saying, I will be bringing soon, at the next ordinance committee, a copy of a, uh, pilot agreement for a solar array from a neighboring community for triple the amount that was purported to be the industry standard, five thousand dollars. So, stay tuned for that. Um, 'cause we were told that's the, that's the going rate, and perhaps not. So, uh, we'll, we'll see.
And I, for lack, I keep referring them back to them as TIFs also, but in, in this particular one...
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think way, way, way too much was given away to get this deal done. I don't think, I don't think as much on the tax revenue, the future tax revenue, given what we gave, given what was provided in millions and millions of dollars financed, to have to give away ten years' worth of, um, tax revenue, I think was excessive. Now, it's, we got the project done, but I wouldn't wanna see this become a standard for future projects, and we need the time to look at these things as they're coming down the, down the, uh, pipeline to us.
Counselor McGivern?
I had a chance to talk to Counselor Sullivan about this order. I was not concerned, but interested with the wording of it as, as it pertained to Parsons' paper, and I think Mike answered all, all my questions. I think he just, you just heard him tonight. This, this goes far beyond one, one project. I think it's a very good order in terms of, why aren't we getting information a little bit quicker, ahead of time? Why aren't all the parties, like the assessors, the people who are involved that have to make decisions onboard, not at the eleventh hour, but, you know, onboard before that? But during my conversation, Counselor Sullivan has an incredible knowledge about hydropower, the canal system, and things that are going on with the gas and electric, and I think anybody, if you have a chance, talk to him about it, because there's some interesting thoughts and things that can be done a little bit different, and, uh, I think it's just something that we're all, we all need, need to be aware of as we make decisions like this.
Good. We appreciate his knowledge. Take anything, any advice we can get. So, motion on the floor is to send item number thirty-two to the D G N R committee for review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number thirty-three. Also introduced by Counselor Sullivan, that the city council review and amend section eighteen thirty-five of the regulations of blighted and vacant buildings and any other sections as may be necessary. Recommendation should be solicited from the mayor, building commissioner, and board of health and police department. Ordinance, I assume?
Second.
Yeah. Motion's been made, seconded, to receive and refer to ordinance. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan, if any.
Um, we're getting late. I can make this one real short.
Okay, we'll take you up on that.
Uh, the Armory.
The Armory.
Yeah.
Very good. That was short. Thank you. Uh, thirty-three, a motion on the floor is to send thirty-three to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item thirty-four, that the city council enact a proclamation congratulating the fifth and sixth grade Hoyok Lady Knights for a tremendous season and recent tournament championship. Motion to adopt?
Motion to receive and adopt?
Second.
And you'll help us to coordinate with, uh, we'll get the proclamation, but the wording and who to invite and all that?
Correct.
Type of thing. Maybe we'll have them in for a future meeting type of thing?
I, I think that would be great. Uh, they get very little recognition, recognition, and, uh, they've had an outstanding year. They've got a great bunch of parents and supporters and coaches.
Super.
And, uh, they're representing Hoyok very well.
Super. Counselor McGee?
Sign on.
Yep. Thank you. We're gonna need fifteen of those.
She's gonna, she's gonna take it away, but, you know, gotta use it.
Fantastic order. I, I just asked that we, uh, that night in the meeting, when they come in, we, we pay heed to Counselor Graney's order that we start at seven o'clock, because these fifth and sixth graders have a lot of homework to do, and we gotta get them out of here.
That's right. Especially English homework, right?
You just wore up that red book over there, Counselor McGee. It's number one in here. It's number one.
He's got his eye on you, Joe. You're in trouble now.
I would also, if, if we could, we could make a, a copy of it for each member of the team.
Psh, oh, each one?
Yes.
Uh, okay. We'll see if that's possible, uh, assuming, you know, recognizing, I don't know how many people are on the team. Okay. That, just, just so you know, that is a tall order. I don't know how many proclamations we have, and we usually have a frame for each, and, uh, there's a bit, we'll, we'll discuss offline.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's get this passed, and then we can go through the logistics. All in favor of adopting this?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? So adopted. Thirty-five. City council create a position under the authority of the building commissioner with the sole purpose of managing the demolition process of the many blighted buildings in the city. Funding is already in place. This will save the city thousands of thousands of dollars and potentially free up cash from other uses.
Fi- send it to finance?
Finance and have the building commissioner come in, I assume? Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is to send to finance, uh, with a copy to the building commissioner. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Oh, yep, just one second. Michael's got the, Counselor Sullivan has the floor.
Yeah, um, this ties together with some of the, uh, other stuff. It's, it's, we, we need a more holistic approach to how things are going. We're, we're not, we're, we're bringing more properties, um, we're, we're bringing more properties into this, into the stream that need demolition than we're getting rid of every year. We're swimming against the tide right now. Um, if you take, for example, the amount of money that we're spending to get two or three buildings torn down, all right? The, uh, the, the, a crew doing this for the city would get ten, twenty times the results with the same dollars that we're already spending. Uh, you know, and the, to tie this together, the reason in, in finance also, I saw what we're doing with the purchasing department also, as we, as we change those rules and adapt to the state standard, a department head like this, I put on the table here for everybody to look at, some of the things that a person in this position would be able to do. Um, right now, we have to go through, uh, bidding processes and also for the disposition of city property. So, if you take, for example, what just happened with the Armory, if we had someone in a businesslike manner, they can make these decisions and do this stuff in a timely fashion. What you see on the right here is a piece of slate from the Armory. Now, uh, there's very few buyers around for slate. You don't accomplish much. Uh, you can still do your due diligence, but it goes for a dollar fifty apiece. That's the going market rate out there. All of this stuff could be harvested by a city crew and being used to support not only this demolition, but it could also be kept in-house in the city. That could, those slates could be going to the, um, Fairfield Ave Historic Commission, for example, for renovations Victorian buildings. So, we have stuff like that. The glass block you see there was, um, from the, um, I believe the Albion Building in Hoyok. Uh, that could be used, uh, well, there, there's a market for those also, so they could be disposed of to help pay for the demolitions as they go in progress, but also they could be used as we develop other things i- in the, um, it's, it's too late now, but the, um, trying to think of a good example here, quick, uh, the, um, High Speed Computing Center or the, um, I believe it's the, the Council on Aging, uh, up there that we, we built. All out of new materials, nothing of, uh, historic, uh, components, uh, from the city. The brick you see there, um, is from Yeo Bud. Um, they've been selling them up at, um, uh, Highland Hardware and at the cottage. Um, it also provided work for a local printer here who was, uh, uh, able to package them and stuff, and people can have them, you know, for nothing else, for souvenirs around town. But it also pays, they, they can all be sold, be sold wholesale for twenty-two cents a brick instead of going to a landfill. The, uh, nice sample of flooring you see there are beams that came out of, um, the former Simpson Dudley Mill, which was down on Water Street. Uh, they can be milled, um, this, this was an example, these came out of a hundred and twenty-five-year-old mill, what you see there, uh, and turned into, uh, top-end flooring, stuff that sells on the market for sixteen dollars a square foot, and has gone as far away as mansions, uh, uh, in Montana and Bermuda, and, uh, some of it's even been shipped to, uh, Japan. And this is stuff that's just going out of the city right now. It could actually be used to help fund some of this, this stuff that we need to get done here. So...
That's great. Frank, it's fantastic. Counselor Roman?
Yes, Mr. President, and, uh, through you, Mr. President, I would like to offer a friendly amendment again after the Armory went down. Like many of you, I was concerned, and I called the building commissioner, um, you know, Damian, right away, and I said, I set a meeting for the, the next day, and I saw it on our agenda item that this was there. So, my friendly amendment is that there's currently two positions already in existence under the building commissioner. They just need to be funded. So, my friendly amendment would be that we fund, it is currently listed as the property and maintenance demolition, um, supervisor for the city of Hoyok. Um, and I have the job description and everything. I met with the, exactly to go along your order, so it just needs to be funded. So, the position does exist, uh, and actually there's a secondary, uh, position, 'cause that was my question, who's on this, who's doing this, to Counselor Sullivan's great order, I went and started digging. So, just my friendly amendment would be that we research the funding of this, either one position or the, the both positions, 'cause I think they're needed.
The, the, I, I believe the funding is already in place. I, I think it's just victim to our hiring freeze right now.
No, no.
No, no.
It was an order, or a request by Damian...
Was it put in the budget?
No, it, it, he was looking to take from demolition, kind of, kind of odd...
Yeah, Counselor McGee?
From demolition to fund these two positions, which he had negotiated with the unions to, to redo.
Okay.
He was invited in, unfortunately couldn't make it that night, so it was rescheduled, but then all the budget stuff kinda took control. It is now, those type of things are coming back. It's, he was requested to come in, he just couldn't make it at the time. We just gotta find it in the jacket and put it back up front. That's all. And, and then figure out how the positions are, you know, it is coming from a line item, but then the following year, what's it gonna add to the budget, is how you have to look at it.
Right. Well, when, when did he propose to create these jobs? I mean, they haven't been in any budget that I'm aware of.
No, 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 they're not.
These are new positions.
New, new positions. But the money, the money does exist for them, it's just another...
Where?
It's, it's...
In the, in the demolition account?
In the demolition account.
So, he's, okay, so he's taking, he's gonna, he, they haven't requested a transfer, so he needs to go speak to his boss and put in a transfer request and send it over here? so he needs to go speak to his boss and put in a transfer request and send it over here?
Yeah, that's what's in Finance.
Okay, and there's, that, is that already in Finance?
Yeah, I just said we.
Okay, oh, okay, that was lost, I mean, I thought you were having, talking about a conversation about creating it, you're saying the transfer is already there?
No, no, he requested it already.
Okay, and that's coming up shortly?
It'll come back around, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. So Finance will take care of that, and Finance will take care of, of this as well, I'm sure. Okay, great, all in favor of referring 35 over to Finance? Opposed?
So moved. Mr. President, just point of order, so Mr. Roman's amendment, but where do we stand with the amendment?
I withdrew my amendment.
Oh, because I thought that was the amendment on the floor about.
Well, I'm confused, okay, well, hold on, let's be fair, Counsel Roman makes, let me be clear, I thought you were giving some information, that you said there's job descriptions are out there and blah, 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 apparently the gentleman has already got a transfer pending in Finance, so.
See, my whole conversation was this is already in Finance, so we don't, you know, to have another order in the jacket was either to amend or withdraw the amendment, because it's already currently pending before Finance, so that would, my friendly recommendation to the maker of the order, but again, I would, you know, take his advice on it, because to me, I did my research and I saw it was already pending in Finance, so my recommendation would be to withdraw it, because it already exists, but I think for the conversation, it was good.
All right, so if we pass the transfer, he makes the case, passes the transfer, we're good to go. Beautiful.
So.
Counsel Valentin.
No, my, my question was if the amendment was to change the wording from create a position to fill the position, because obviously there are two different routes, and so that's, that's why I was just asking for clarification, because the way Counselor Sullivan's order reads right now is to create a position, and so through the chair, Counselor Sullivan, did you know about this position that Counselor Roman just referred to?
Well, that's the new one that he's proposing.
Oh, but I'm just asking through the chair if he was aware that that already existed.
I, I know that these positions have been created, that he's gone to the unions, they've drawn up a position, okay, but they haven't been filled.
Well, my confusion is because the wording for your order says create a position, that's all.
I think it's, you say tomato, I say tomato, it's, it's making a new position that doesn't yet exist, and do you have the funding for it?
Mr. President, just to clarify then, I just, I'll make a motion to withdraw the order, because then it's already in committee.
Yeah, you, I think at this point, if we approve the money, he knows what he wants to do, if the Council agrees, we're good to go, right? Okay, beautiful. All right, 36, thank you, Mr. Roman, for taking care of that procedurally. Number 36, introduced by Counselor Sullivan, order the City Council initiate a home rule petition for prevailing wages exemptions. This would be to exempt Hoyok from complying with Sections 26 through 27G of Chapter 149 of the General Laws for Projects Estimated to Cost $35,000 or Less. Ordinance, perhaps, or chartering rules? Or DGNR, we could send this to a committee, because I'm sure we're gonna need an explanation as to what this is, why you think this is good for us to do, and then we would theoretically pass it.
Would it be better if I explained it before we decided where it goes, or?
Um, it's a home rule petition, the merits of which aren't particularly relevant to what committee it goes to, it's just, it's more of where do we want to send a home rule petition?
Mr. President, I would, I would suggest, DGR is fine, but it's actually more of a finance issue or, or a ordinance issue, I think.
I think so, too.
Yeah, okay, all right, so for the moment, perhaps ordinance?
Ordinance.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to send to ordinance, under discussion, Counsel Sullivan, you want to just give us a brief overview?
Okay, well, number one, it's a flat-out effort to save the city money, we have a lot of projects go out, small, small projects, they're all done at prevailing wage, $40, $41 and up per hour, you know, it's, it's not necessary for a lot of this stuff to go out and pay that kind of money to have some of these jobs done. I know throughout the city, there's a lot that would fit into this category, but in particular, when you get into this demolition process and stuff like that, we've got abatement that can be done on some of these buildings, right, for $3,500, $4,500, even if the buildings aren't being torn down, if we, if we got in there ahead of time, and this ties back to both to the, you know, previous, you know, what, what the tools are that the people doing this kind of work are gonna need to do it in a timely fashion. I got a chance this morning to go through the Armory with Damian, and we were really, really, really lucky, most of the abatement had been done in there already, this thing is not as big a disaster as it could have been as, like the Parsons, if, if that abatement wasn't done. So even, even though we take possession of a building, now you can get in there quick through a department like the Building Department and get this work done relatively inexpensively. These are just little $3,500 deals, local contractors can take it and not have to pay prevailing wage on it, they still pay good money to their employees, and I'd also like to get an opinion from Legal on this also, because I've got a copy of a similar one that the Town of Chatham is trying to put through as well.
Okay, all right, very good, motion on the floor is to send to ordinance?
With a copy to Legal?
Copy to the Law Department for review, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 37, from introduced by Counsel Tomlin, that the Office of Planning and Economic Development provide, provide the City Council with a list of all city-owned vacant lots.
Receive and send it to DGNR.
Okay, can I be added as a co-sponsor, Counsel Tomlin?
Sure.
And I'd like to, once we get a copy of this list, I'd like to see the.
Yeah, and then a copy to OPED, please.
Yep, so motion is to send to DGNR with a copy to OPED.
Just, just real.
Discussion, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, just real briefly, I was sitting having breakfast the other morning, and I was talking to a gentleman who is leasing some property somewhere, and he asked about a lot down off of Cabbage Street that's, I guess, city-owned, and I guess there's some other plans for it, so, but he was willing to meet with the mayor and pay so much money for it and put a building up there, so, and there's a lot of other places throughout the city that people have, you know, businesses here that want to stay here, that possibly could move out of here if they have land or available properties that the city does own that we can work something out, so I'd like, I'd like to see that list to see what actually can be done with these properties and get them off the city's hands and get them back on the, on the tax, tax rolls.
Mr. President?
How's Barley?
Can I make this, just we send a copy to the Board of Health as well, because they are compiling a list, to my knowledge.
Okay, copy also to Board of Health.
Please.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mr. President, can we suspend and take 38 and 39 as a package, please?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up 38 and 39 as a package, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 38, introduced by Counselors Bartley and Sullivan, HPD, monitor speed on Longwood Ave, report findings to Public Safety Committee. 39, introduced by Counsel Bartley, HPD, enforce the Do Not Block the Box ordinance citywide, but in particular the two on North Hampton Street near Clark and Gilman, please report back to the Public Service Committee any findings.
Yeah, I, can I just change that to, it should be Public Safety Committee, I mean, I put a typo in there.
Yep, that's fine, Public Safety Committee on 39.
Thank you, and then, so just receive and refer to Public Safety with a copy to the Hoyok Police Department?
Second.
All right, motions made and seconded to receive, refer to both items to Public Safety Committee with a copy to the police.
Under discussion, the first one is from a constituent who resides on Longwood, and Counselor Sullivan was gracious enough to add his name, and then the second one is an order I filed in the past, and I, and especially in light of the, you know, the controversy, the conversation we had relative to Whiting Farms Road and the left-hand turn into Kmart Plaza, I thought this was a pertinent time to bring it up again, thank you.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Tomlin had a.
Just briefly, if it's possible for Counsel Bartley, if you could add my name onto that, Do Not Block the Box.
Okay, Pete.
Sure, adding Counsel Tomlin's name to.
Thank you, Counsel.
For 39.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we take 40 and 41 as a package, please?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up 40 and 41 as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. 40, introduced by Counsel Bartley, Hoyok's finance team develop a plan to find funding for the myriad of infrastructure problems in the city. For example, prepare a bond package as suggested by City Council President on inauguration day, of particular concern of the broke-down traffic lights. 41, introduced by Counsel Bartley, that the Parks Department, now that they have developed a plan and a budget to improve Mayor Field, that the city determine a means to fund the construction, for example, prepare a bond package as suggested by City Council President on inauguration day.
So, just in light of what you said earlier, I'm just gonna receive and refer these to you?
Yep.
Exactly.
With a copy to the mayor, if I may.
Yes, okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the City Council President with a copy to the mayor, for the reasons aforementioned.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And I'll be sure to restate those when I send the email. Item 42, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the City Engineer review the intersection at West Franklin and Linden Street, it's a dangerous intersection and needs further study, safety remediation. Please examine if a flashing light as well as making it a three-way intersection with Linden fully one-way is possible solutions, please report back to the City Council as soon as possible. I'd like to have a motion to send this to ordinance with a copy to the City Engineer, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I've filed this one before.
Okay.
But we have a new engineer, so.
Perhaps, yeah, I'll be. Easy for you to say.
After yours is when they painted those lines, I think.
Ah-ha.
We got Grant for that, though, so it didn't cost us.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Very good.
That was not easy.
Yeah, you can. Item number 43, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the DPW replace the guardrail in front of 237 Sargent's Tree with a new and improved guardrail. DPW, please also place reflective arrows on the guardrail coming from Magnolia and Sargent all the way around the bend to make the turn more apparent to motorists coming up Sargent, please handle as soon as possible, because this is a safety issue, I'd ask that this be receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW.
Second.
All motions been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Ah-ha, motion to adjourn.
Are there late files?
Eight people having not voted to adjourn, we move now on to late file A. Communication one, from the mayor, I hereby reappoint Kathryn Jakowski to the position of temporary tax collector, today March 1st, for a period of 60 days to expire May 3rd. Her salary is $61,270. Yours truly, the mayor.
Receive.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file B, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the mayor come before a committee of the City Council discuss his plan to move municipal offices, he should discuss this plan with us prior to implementing it, I would recommend this go to ordinance.
So moved.
The fact that the next one is related to, is gonna be related to ordinance, I'd also ask that Counsel Greeney be added as a co-sponsor, please?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor of receiving, referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file C, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the ordinance committee discuss a possible revision to ordinance 2-182 to require City Council input on assignment of offices inside City Hall as well as amended as further required by the City Council to ensure the proper assignment of offices inside City Hall, I'd ask that Counsel Greeney be added as a co-sponsor, and that this be referred to the ordinance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file D, introduced by Counsel Jordan, that the Retirement Board Executive Director and their commissioners are requested to appear before the City Council to discuss the time for holding their meetings. This was an ordinance, so this was an ordinance issue, so I'm gonna request that this go to ordinance. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, that's the end of the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, there is no further discussion, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, we are adjourned.